Good afternoon, everyone. I think we'll get started. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of June 21st, 2017. A present agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and staff, cell your phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The planning commission action is final on the following items: 1.5B special permit number 17021, 1.6 special permit number 17016, 1.7 county special permit number 17018, 1.8 special permit number 17019, 1.9 county special permit number 17020, 4.2E special permit number 17017, and 5.1 special permit number 17012. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the planning commission to the city council by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the planning commission. The planning commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the city council or the county board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 7th, 2017. May I have a motion, please?
So move Finnegan.
Higgins.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Hove.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of the business is a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you state that item. The item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Okay. Please note that the following items are being removed from today's consent agenda for separate public hearing. Item 1.3A, comprehensive plan amendment 17005, and item 1.3B, change of zone 17016, and these are relating to the Abbott Sports Center proposal, and item, let me see, I think I have one more that came off last minute. Item 1.7 county special permit 17018 is also being removed for separate public hearing as well as item 1.9 county change of zone 17020. We've received some written comments in opposition to these applications, therefore they'll have separate public hearing. Also, please note that Commissioner Shear has declared conflict of interest on consent agenda item 1.1, which is comprehensive plan conformance number 17009, and 1.6 county special permit number 17016. Therefore, he will not be voting on today's consent agenda. Okay, the first item under consent is item 1.1, comprehensive plan conformance number 17009. To review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley redevelopment plan that identifies the Telegraph District Phase Two redevelopment project. The redevelopment project area includes approximately 16 acres, more or less, consisting of four areas with connecting streetscape within the project, including Telegraph Flats, Telegraph Loft East, Telegraph Lofts West, and Telegraph Loft South. The project is generally located between Am and O Streets, 20th Street to the Antelope Valley Channel, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska. Next item is item 1.2A, comprehensive plan conformance number 17010, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a request to declare approximately 34.4 acres of land at Jensen Park as surplus, and for the acquisition of approximately 39.76 acres of land on property generally located at South 84th and Yankee Hill Road. Item 1.2B is comprehensive plan amendment number 17003, to amend the future land use plan of the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by redesignating future land uses in the area of Jensen Park from urban density residential and industrial to green space, and from open space to urban density residential and commercial on property generally located at South 84th Street and Yankee Hill Road. The next item is item 1.4, change of zone 17011 from AG Agricultural District to R3, residential district for approximately 25.53 acres, more or less, on property generally located at North 49th Street and Alba Road. Next consent agenda item is 1.5A, change of zone 17014 from AG Agricultural to AGR Agricultural Residential District, and the associated special permit, which is item 1.5B, special permit 17021, for an AG Agricultural District Community Unit Plan to include nine acre acreage lots on approximately 25.12 acres, more or less, on property. These are both generally located at Southwest 25th Street and West Denton Road. I would note that this is final action on the special permit 17021 unless appealed to the clerk within 14 days of today's action. Item 1.6 is county special permit number 17016 for the addition of nine single-family lots, each to be approximately three acres, more or less, on property generally located southeast of the intersection of North 176th Street and Havlock Avenue. Again, this is final action unless appealed to the county board within 14 days. Next item is item 1.8, special permit 17019, for a special permit for expansion of a nonconforming use with waivers to the front and side yard setbacks on property generally located at 2554 Woodsdale Boulevard. This is also final action unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days. Next item, and the final item under today's consent agenda, is 1.10, street and alley vacation number 17005, to vacate a portion of North 43rd Street right of way, a portion of Walker Avenue right of way, and a portion of the east-west alley located in Block 43, pitcher in Baldwin's Second Addition to University Place, generally located at 2320 North 43rd Street. This is, again, final action on special permit 17021, county special permit 17016, and county special permit 17019, unless appealed to either the city clerk or county board within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these remaining consent agenda items?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
I don't understand. If we are speaking opposition to one, can you stand?
Yes. And what was that item?
Which items?
Seven, uh, the Capital Beach, seventeen oh one two.
Okay, ma'am, that item.
That's been removed.
Okay.
We'll have a special hearing for that. Yes, ma'am?
Seventeen oh one one.
1.4, okay. Change of zone 17011. We'll remove that item from consent, and it will have public hearing as well.
Yes, sir?
Yes, would I speak to the change of zone 17014 with special permit 17021?
You'd like to talk about those?
Yes.
Okay. 1.5A and B.
Okay. Okay, 1.5A and B, change of zone 17014, and special permit 17021 will also be removed from the consent agenda for separate public hearing.
Anything else? It doesn't appear to be. I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval, Core.
Second, Finnegan.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Shear.
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a conflict of interest. Hove.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
There are no requests for deferrals, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should have, shall state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, and you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, I'm going to call these items that were pulled from the consent agenda in the order they were actually listed on our initial agenda. First item, 1.3A, comprehensive plan amendment number 17005, to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from open space to, and commercial to industrial and agricultural stream corridor on property generally located at North 70th Street and Arbor Road. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
Yes.
Tracy.
I've had a conversation with the woman who operates Volleyball Club Nebraska about this project.
Jerry, are you calling both 1.3A and B?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. There is an associated item, which is item 1.3B, or I'm sorry, change of zone 17016, from H2 Highway Business District to I1 Industrial District on property generally located at 7620 North 70th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval on the change of zone and approval for the comprehensive plan amendment. Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah.
Andrew.
Andrew Theroff, planning staff. So I'll talk about the change of zone first and then the comp plan amendment. So where we're at is the site of the existing Abbott Sports Complex, North 70th Street. This is operated by the Lincoln Sports Foundation, which is a private nonprofit organization. They have determined that a sports complex site may not be viable here anymore, so they're looking to sell or redevelop the site. So the application before us is a change of zone to I1 on the western portion of the site. It's about 31 acres. Right now, it is zone H2 Highway Business, so it could be redeveloped into any number of commercial-type uses today. This particular applicant was looking to do a more industrial-type use on the site, so they're looking for a change of zone to I1. There is a zoning agreement associated with this, so basically what they could do if this change of zone were approved is redevelop this existing building here into some industrial use, like a warehouse, something like that. Any additional buildings built on the site would be, we'd be requiring a preliminary plat with that to look at streets, utilities, grading, all of that. Some other conditions with this change of zone, the youth sports activities need to be at least 300 feet from the I1. So basically, when we're looking 300 feet, it's the tennis facility in east. All of those fields, the tennis facility, could remain being used today. This doesn't change those, that status. Tied to this is the comprehensive plan amendment. Right here is the area we're looking at. So it's shown as green space today in the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, to reflect the use as the Abbott Sports Complex. If the sports complex is going away, it's no longer appropriate to say that this is a green space or recreation area. You can see this part of Lincoln is a heavily industrial area. There's, on this site, there's future industrial to the west, north. The treatment plan is actually down here, so we think industrial uses are appropriate for this site. Do we have any questions?
Question for Andrew.
Andrew, can you go back to them? So can you point out to me where the tennis courts are?
That's the building, and there's the courts, yeah. And so this is about 300 feet right here.
Okay, so the building there, which one is, from this layout, which one is the actual Abbott Sports Complex that people are referring to?
I believe the whole thing is the sports complex.
So when they're holding, like, the, playing volleyball and playing basketball inside, which building are they in?
I think that would be in this building that we would be talking about becoming an industrial building.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, you did say that this is privately run?
Yeah, it's, I should, yeah, it's privately owned and operated. It's not a city park.
It is not a city park, okay, thank you.
Have a question. Andrew, this is currently zoned H2.
Yeah.
What are some of the uses that could be accommodated on this site or in that building in an H2 zone, which it is already?
Yeah, so it's highway business, so things like retail uses, I think heavier uses, like vehicle repair, things like that, personal services. There's a wide variety of uses. Basically, the line between, like, the H districts and the I districts. The I brings in more manufacturing-type uses. It's kind of a broad way to look at it, but there's a pretty wide range of commercial uses that they could do today without any, any approval from us. Thanks.
Andrew, I've never inquired on this before. When, when a change of zone occurs, what is the timeframe in which that, like, once that's approved, does that happen immediately thereafter?
Well, this would go to city council, and then it's, yes.
Effective after that?
Yeah.
Okay. And my understanding is that in I1, then, no youth activities can occur in, in that district. Is that correct?
Yep, and again, the I1 is just this, this western portion here, so there's a few fields and then the, the building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Applicant?
Andrew Willis with Klein Williams, 233 South 13th Street here in Lincoln, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant, in this case, has entered into a written purchase agreement with the owner of the property. The, the owner, again, has determined for their own reasons that, and I'm not privy to any of that, that it was, that they listed it and they wanted to sell the property. The applicant desires to redevelop the property, construct an industrial park warehouse development, and this change of zone, the, one of the key distinctions, and I should say, we're not, it's not, we're not, we don't have any definite plans yet, but the key, from our perspective, between the H2 and the I1, was that warehouse component to it in allowing that. We think that it, this change of zone would really complement the area, the adjacent property that is industrial area, and really fill a need in Lincoln. I think there's a, there's a need that's for larger warehouse industrial-type development, and this seems to be a good fit with the neighboring area, the access to the highways. Again, beyond that overall goal, which would be to develop into an industrial park, we don't have specific users, don't have real concrete plans. It's just part of the due diligence on the, on the purchase right now. And I understand, you know, that there's, there's some opposition that you'll hear from, from the users, you know, currently, and again, I'd just note, the property was listed. I believe it was listed sometime around Thanksgiving last year. It was, it was prior to the, prior to the beginning of this year. So it's been on the market for a while. We see this as, as the, the potential use and the best use of the property long-term. I can't speak to the viability, you know, of the, of the current use, but it was listed for sale. So, and again, we, developer is, without any current plans, as I said, the, with, with the space beyond the 300 feet, we intend to, you know, accommodate as long as it, as long as we could until this area was developed into, into an actual industrial use. But again, looking at the, the overall goal and the future of this, this place, we think that's the long-term, the best long-term use of that, and that's, that's what we're interested in, in developing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Question from Mr. Willis.
As part of your due diligence, did you take a look at any of the underlying leases that were involved with the tenants that are currently there?
Yeah, there, there's leases in place through October, end of October, maybe November, and the goal would be not to do anything to interfere with the current leases, to maintain those throughout the term of the lease. But, and then, and then again, potentially, depending on timing, we don't have real concrete plans. It might be, the developer might be open to looking at a month-to-month lease. But, but again, the ultimate goal is to develop this into an industrial area, but not to, not to interfere with the current leases.
Other questions?
I just want to clarify. So you represent the, the current owner or the prospective owner?
The prospective owner.
Did the new developer consider other options as far as keeping it with the use that it is and trying to see if that might be a viable business?
I, I mean, I think the answer is it's not a financially viable business, for, at least from a developer's perspective. We're not a sports park developer, so that's probably out of, out of our area of expertise anyway, or the applicant's area of expertise. But this, this really is, it's a good site for an industrial use. It's a good, it fits in with the overall area. Didn't see it as a long-term financial viable option to, to maintain that as a, as a sports and recreation facility. And again, I can't speak to the current owner, but presumably that's why they listed it for sale as well.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item, or these two items? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to these items? Please come forward.
Jason Anderson, 3446 River Circle here in Lincoln. Been a longtime resident of Lincoln. Have been to this complex a number of times throughout the years, have seen it in its glory days, have seen it in the days where it's not as good. Currently, I have two youth who are participating in programs there, both on the soccer fields and in a basketball program. I don't think Lincoln needs more warehouses right now. Recently, the city has had articles about the need for additional sports complexes. This is in the last three, four years. I know the Sporting Village, you know, took up some of the soccer, but basketball and volleyball are not yet being played there. It does not make sense to me to change this area. I think we need to continue looking at how it can be supported, how it can be grown, and, you know, you look at some of the other developments that have happened with tax increment financing, none of that's ever happened on the north side. So I would be against this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to these items?
Nick, Q6, 6400 West Shore Drive, Lincoln. Actually, I'm testifying on a neutral stance. I'm a manufacturer supporting good products. We've been involved with the Abbott Sports Complex and Speedway Village, and many of these type of facilities across the country, and I'm here to tell you they're incredibly difficult to make cash flow, and I think that's the nature of what we're dealing with here. I do just have one question. Maybe it's a comment. I wasn't quite sure when the question was asked about when any change of zoning would go into effect, but it was testified by Mr. Willis from Klein Williams that they were willing to work with existing tenants. However, I understand that as soon as the zoning got passed and it became effective, the building that we refer to as the indoor facility, the volleyball, basketball portion, could no longer be used, no matter how hard they worked at it, because it would not be more than 100 feet, I think was the number, outside the I zoning. So I would only ask you to consider that, to the degree that the facility has some legs while the developer is moving forward with whatever plans they have to redevelop, which we all know sometimes happens quickly, sometimes takes forever, sometimes never happens, that there is a consideration given that allows for the continued use of that facility for its current, current purpose, because clearly there is a need in the city, and, but can't be in opposition of the ultimate change, because it might be the ultimate best use. But I would ask you to be cautious of all of a sudden doing something that says they can't continue to play basketball and volleyball in the facility till somebody comes in and says, "I want a warehouse," so that would be my...
I'll be sure to ask that question. Thank you. Good question.
I have a couple of questions for you. What other facilities are available in the city of Lincoln that would be available for indoor sports, basketball, volleyball?
Certainly, there's a shortage. One of the dilemmas in life, and I deal with this all over the country, pay-to-play places unless they're heavily financed by an organization that doesn't care whether they make money or not, former NFL players, former NBA players, or whatever. They have an incredibly difficult time. The, one of the unusual things about supply and demand in this particular market is there seems to be an infinite amount of demand for time. However, the cost of maintaining and operating and building these kind of facilities is such that the cost per hour of actual utilizable time is such that the typical youth organization just cannot. And it's one of the reasons, quite honestly, that the Speedway Village indoor facility has not yet reached fruition on the volleyball and basketball side. Certainly, my company was involved, not in an ownership structure, the Bison Youth Sports Complex that now is owned by LPS, and they used it most recently for classrooms for, I think it was Arnold or one of the schools that they were remodeling. Now that's in the hands of LPS for warehousing and whatever, but, so there is clearly a short supply, and the question is who's responsible for doing that. The Abbott Foundation worked hard for a long time trying to make this work financially, and it just never got much better. Everybody who tried to operate it, not the Abbott Foundation, but those people involved, worked hard to try to make it work, but it's an incredibly difficult market. And most of them, the third or fourth owner, who buy it for 50 cents on the dollar, and then 25 cents on the dollar, and then a nickel on the dollar, and then keep it operating, maybe have a chance of making these work, quite honestly. And I tell people who reach out to us to buy equipment, that same message. As much as I like to sell them equipment, it's always on a cash-in-advance basis, so. So there is a shortage.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of these two items?
My name is John Cook, 1600 Court Street, and I want to give a little history. So a little over 10 years ago, I recognized a need for volleyball courts in the community because, as my kids were going through, we were in cafeterias and middle schools paying $60 an hour to try to get these kids an opportunity to play volleyball. And there's a lot of competition with the public schools and using their facilities, and that, about 10 years ago, they got to the point where they said, "We're not going to allow any more outside people coming in." There was liability issues and so on. So I went to the Abbott people because I saw this building out here, and when my kids were playing soccer out there, I saw that this complex had a lot of room and with soccer fields that weren't being used. So I went to them and, and asked them to convert one quarter of that building to four volleyball courts. I went to Angie Muleheisen at Union Bank, and I asked her to raise, help me raise $100,000 to pay for the volleyball courts to go in there. And those are the courts that are still in there today. They're a sport court, so they didn't have to put wood in there. It was a plastic surface that, it works great in these types of facilities because you don't have to refinish it. You just basically wipe it with a mop and it's clean. So Abbott, I, I connected them with a very successful club program in Chicago that grosses $4.6 million a year in Chicago, playing, running a club volleyball program. They have two facilities side by side. I'll disagree with Nick. Volleyball world right now, there's, I can tell you, in several places, people are making a lot of money running volleyball clubs. It is a huge business. It is growing. Volleyball is now the most popular girls' sport in America, and it is crazy. I'm leaving tomorrow to go to Orlando. There's 25,000 kids going to Orlando to play AAU volleyball. So these kids want to be on teams, and they want to participate, and they want to have the opportunity. To me, the Abbott was a goldmine in location because you could track kids from west Omaha, and there was nothing in Omaha at the time. You could track kids, there was kids driving from Grand Island. We've had players in our program. Jordan Larson from Hooper, Nebraska, who's a two-time Olympian, drove from Hooper to practice in that facility. So having said all that, Abbott, in my opinion, dropped the ball on managing this facility for the volleyball for the volleyball part of it, and as Nick mentioned, there's been other people come in, I know the basketball people have come in, and, uh, at times, though, we've used thirteen courts there for our camps, and at times I've seen tournaments where there's thirteen courts being used in there, and, as it expanded into three sections of it, they left one section still as an indoor soccer field. So, anyway, they hired several people to run it, they failed, it was poorly run, in fact, it got to the point where so poorly run, we stopped trying to use it for our camps, because we would show up, it wasn't, wouldn't be open, it wasn't clean, and so we just thought, "This is not a good, for me, running camps when I've got two-hundred kids bust out there, they can't get into a building." So, in my opinion, it was very poorly run. One of my former players, Maggie Griffin, about four years ago, was working for Smith-Barnie in Chicago, uh, in finance, and decided she missed volleyball and wanted, and came back here as a Chicago girl. She negotiated a lease with Abbott, sports, whatever it's called, the Lincoln Foundation, whoever owns it, and, uh, started a volleyball club. Currently, she has three full-time people, forty-five people working for them, several of our players work for them, she is now, has over a thousand kids involved in that, and it is making a profit. So, to me, so I'm, I'm fighting for this, because we've raised a lot of money to get this going, and I don't want to see this go away for kids in Lincoln and, and for girls. We know the importance of sports and their self-esteem and all those things. Maggie does a great job of running this, where their kids can afford to be on an elite traveling team that's going to Orlando, for example, or kids that maybe can't afford it, want to come in once a week for, you know, over eight weeks and get exposed to volleyball, get coached by great coaches, interact with Nebraska players, Don College players, so college players, and have them as role models, and, and Maggie has a great business model and is running a profit out of that, leasing it from Abbott. So, I, I don't want to be convinced that this cannot work. I just think if somebody gets in there and does this right, and the goal in the beginning was to have that going seven days a week, pretty much about fifty-two weeks a year, with adult leagues, kids leagues, boys, girls, tournaments, with, with restaurants, pro shops, and, and this is how these clubs are doing it, they have a facility where all that's going on, and similar to what they tried to do with the tennis complex at Abbott, there's a place the parents can hang out, they can work out if they want, but that was the grand master plan, of course, that never happened, and Maggie, Maggie took that over, uh, and like I said, the last four years has done an amazing job. Started from scratch, in four years, she's over a thousand kids. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You said she had a lease right now?
She, she leases it in, uh, from the Abbott group, and, uh, I, I don't know the details of that, I'm, I'm not involved in this, I, I just know, um, she worked out a deal with them, that she has the control of those courts when she wants them, and then, of course, I guess there's other times it's open that people can do things and so on, but she's, she's, you know, the more people she has going through there throughout the day, as many days a week, is the way that they can, uh, you know, make that viable financially.
But you don't know how long the lease is for?
I, she told me, I think what these guys all said was in November, if this goes, she's out. So, she's going to be, you're looking at forty-five people, three full-time coaches, going to have no place to go.
And she just leases the volleyball side of it, is that right?
So, my understanding is, and maybe there's other people here that know more of it, she has a one-quarter of that building, four courts, I think she has access for tournaments to do more, I think Cornhusker Shooting Stars and Nebraska Juniors, which is another club that uses that facility, I don't know if they're here, but they use, they share with, I think, the basketball part, so they're, they're converted, they're, they're basketball courts slash volleyball courts that they can jump in and out of. Maggie's portion is just volleyball only, and that's how we built those courts, was just volleyball, it's not basketball, multi-use. And that's the part that she, I believe she leases, but I, I, maybe there's somebody here that knows more about it than I do.
Maybe you can't answer this, maybe there is somebody here that can answer my question, but has Maggie or any of the other, of the other groups that are now leasing, have they had conversations with Abbott about the success that you're talking about?
I don't know, I just know Maggie, who, uh, has shared the frustrations with how it's been run and the support that she gets and the things that she wants to do and hasn't been able to do, because the, the building is deteriorating, it needs a facelift and it needs work, and, uh, I know she's held it together as best she can, but has been frustrated by all that, and, you know, and I, I go out there all the time, because we go recruiting there, I, we have camps there, I mean, I'm out there all the time, and I've just seen the deterioration over the last ten years. Just driving the parking lot, you don't even go in the building, you can see the deterioration. And again, I, I, I don't know, I'm not throwing anybody on the bus here, I just, maybe they don't have the, the staff and the funds to do all that, but the, the thing that's also frustrating is Ralston, who built an arena for Omaha, just put in a brand-new eight-court facility, and I asked, uh, uh, the club program that's in there, who built this, brand-new eight-court, all-wood facility for volleyball. Four-million-dollar project, and I said, "How did you guys do it?" Because this club is smaller than Maggie's, and it was, the city came in and gave them grants and, and support for them to be able to do it. It is a beautiful, beautiful facility, and, and I can't believe we can't do that in Lincoln. When, when we, when, this is the, probably the centerpiece of the country for volleyballs here, right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. Any other questions? Thanks for your time.
Very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to these items?
How you guys doing today? Uh, my name is Angelo Stabler, um, my address is thirty-six, twenty C Street, um, I'm a executive director of a nonprofit here in Lincoln, um, I'm a Lincoln child, I grew up here in Lincoln, I grew up on the north side of Lincoln, off of twenty-seven to O, twenty-seven to Vine area, um, I seen what the worst, or the worst, what the city can bring to these kids, especially the kids that we work with every single day, um, to provide, uh, opportunity for them to reach their full potential. These kid, I mean, have you guys ever sat in front of fifty, sixty kids and looked deep into their eyes, and we're talking about kids that don't have nothing, kids that don't have aggregate, uh, parents that actually look out for them and provide them, these kids are taken care of themselves. These kids are out here, you know, running the streets, you know, you got, uh, siblings taking care of younger siblings, um, because either their dad's out running the streets or in and out of jail, the moms, you know, working two jobs or whatnot, so they don't have the supervision they needed, um, at home. Um, a lot of these kids are coming, you know, in and out of foster care, getting placed here and there, they don't know where they're going to be at, um, days in and days out, or weeks at the end. Um, these kids are dealing with, um, the reason I'm telling you all about the background, I mean, because I grew up in this environment, I grew up in an environment drug-infested, um, domestic violence, uh, street violence, you know what I'm saying, I grew, I grew up around this stuff, I seen this stuff, and these are the kids that we work with, these kids see these stuff every single day, to where, you know, these kids go to the refrigerator, they don't have nothing in the refrigerator. These kids, you know, these kids are losing hope in the system, the system, the same system that is supposed to be helping these kids and trying to motivate these kids and trying to get, provide a guidance and a path for these kids to become successful, these are forgotten children. The, I can't speak on behalf of the other programs and stuff that are involved in Abbott. The only people and the only kids I can speak on are the kids that we work with and the kids that use Abbott. You know, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but kind of going off of what Coach Cook said, a lot of these places in Lincoln, a lot of these places, um, I don't think I mentioned the nonprofit I run, it's God and Seshu Club, um, but a lot of these, a lot of, we have, we, we have twenty, twenty-five, um, basketball programs that we work with. We work with at-risk youth here in Lincoln, kids that, you know, they, they can't pay no fees, you know, they, we, but, if you come to our facility, if you come to one of our practices, our workouts and stuff, um, we're busting all the kids there, like, we go pick up all these kids from all of Lincoln, and we drop them off at the location we're at. We only been using Abbott for about six months, you know, but Abbott has provided an opportunity for these kids to call it home, because we, you know, these kids are not in a stable home, they're not in a place to where, you know, they're moving around a lot and stuff, but we've been able to call Abbott at home for the last six or seven months, and Dan has saved their life when LPS, because the little kids we work with, they, they don't, you know, they are, they make one mistake and they're just cast away, you know, LPS-
Excuse me. Ma'am, could you take that outside, please? Thank you. Please, please, please proceed, I'm sorry.
No, like I said, we have to pay arm and leg, kids that can't afford to go out and, you know, expose, you know, do something they love to do and have the opportunity to do something they love to do, they can't get the opportunity, because we have to pay arm and leg to use a facility, or, like the YMCA ties down all the facilities here in Lincoln, so it's hard for us to get gym space and stuff like that, but Abbott has opened the door for us to have a place where those kids, those kids love going to Abbott, those kids love being in that facility, they call it a place, a home, they, you know, they, they just love being there, because it's, it provides the opportunity, and I feel like this is an opportunity for the community to come together and provide a resource within the community that is not there for these kids, you know, not only the, the kids that I'm working with, but it sounds like there's a thousand volleyball players that are not going to have a ba, uh, it sounds like it's not going to have a volleyball club to go to, because they're going to shut down, uh, Abbott. I feel like this is an opportunity for the community to come together, to rally together, and figure out how we can put our minds together to figure out what we can do to provide an opportunity, um, for these kids to continue having a success and continue having the guidance needed for them to become successful, especially our kids, because our kids don't have the resources, they don't have the guy, the support and stuff like a lot of other kids do here in Lincoln. Our kids are the kids that are getting left behind, our kids are the ones that are getting pushed deeper, deeper into the system, but like I said, I feel like this is an opportunity for the community, we don't need no industrial park, we have plenty of those around here. What we don't have is resources, the opportunity for kids to have the correct guidance, the correct opportunity to become successful in life, we don't have that. You know, some of our basketball teams travel all over, you know, the Midwest, we go down to Wichita, Kansas, they have nice, beautiful facilities with like sixteen basketball courts, where it's just nice, I mean, Omaha just built an Iowa Fieldhouse, I think there's, I can't be corrected, but there's more than ten basketball courts in there. So, I feel like with the right people, the right minds and the, the support of the people behind me and, and within the community, I feel like this would be an opportunity for us to really come together and provide and work together, to provide an opportunity for the community and not let these kids get, especially my kids, you know, the kids I work with, to get pushed deeper and deeper into the system, and not have that correct outlet and that home they can call home consistently, because we do struggle finding gym space and stuff to run our programming and stuff for our kids that we work with.
Thank you. Any questions? How much do you use the facility?
Uh, we use it about three days, three to four days a week, for about four hours. We're talking about sixty to seventy, maybe eighty kids.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of these items?
Hello, Andrea Tarnick, four-fifty-seven Fletcher Avenue, and I run a roller derby league, it also includes a youth league as well as an adult women's league here in Lincoln, and we use Abbott about nine months out of the year, and so, we have constantly been finding new homes to practice, um, after State Fair Park closed down, Pershing, and now Skate Zone. So, our biggest, um, opposition is just not being able to have any space for our youth program or our adult program. Again, I agree, there's plenty of warehouses and industrial space in Lincoln, definitely not enough sporting space, especially on the north side of town, and we require a hard court surface, so anything like Sporting Village is turf, so, it's just not, it doesn't, isn't conducive to our sports, and it's obviously basketball or volleyball as well, so, um, we're just looking to keep Abbott as-is and continue to grow whatever we can out there.
Thank you.
Do you have a, a lease with the organization?
So, we're got pay-to-play, so we will rent space on a monthly basis, as needed, um, and so that, like I said, is about nine months out of the year.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of these items?
My name's Adam Lenhoff, eighty-six, ten, Misty Blue Circle, uh, we own Lincoln Elite Gymnastics out there, um, we started about a year and a half ago, we have, uh, over a hundred kids now. Uh, as far as Abbott goes, um, I also have, my daughters played volleyball for years, um, one of my daughters plays for one of the clubs out there, um, that's still there. I just can't express enough how much, how much we need more courts and more room, uh, in northeast Lincoln, I grew up northeast Lincoln, went to northeast high school, you know, my whole life, and, uh, been in this area, and we're talking thousands of kids, uh, go there all the time, and to, to think about taking it away now and not being profitable, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what volleyball makes, I don't know what all these other sports make, um, we don't pay much to Abbott, but Abbott's never asked us for much, um, I'd be willing to pay a lot more, uh, to be honest, we make eight to ten thousand dollars a month out there, and I, I hardly pay anything, so, not profitable, why, why don't we ask for, I mean, you know, let's, I ask for some money then, let's, you know, Abbott, the people who are in charge of, of, uh, what people are getting paid or not getting paid and things like this, I think they're trying to run it into the ground, not asking for no money, and, yeah, I make more money by not giving them it, but if it's, have a place to be or not, um, I have a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment at Abbott Sports Complex right now, um, like I said, very profitable, and, uh, I, by talking to a number of people that I've talked to, nobody hardly pays much, um, like I said, it'd be easy, I own a construction company, it'd be easy for me to make it look like I'm not profitable either, and run something into the ground, so, it just seems like, I mean, I know the guys who run it out there, I know the guys who are, are handcuffed and we're doing our heating and air, because I own a construction company, so I got my guys coming over and doing it for free, for, for us, for everyone that's in the building, because there is no money, and they don't want to pay, so, I mean, I get it, you know, their hearts not in it and things like that, and they don't want to do it, but that's, you know, I can see both ends of this, I've, you know, I have a few different businesses, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Jennifer Lesswing, six-thousand-one, The Knolls, I am the wife of Dan Lesswing, the director of the Cornhusker Shooting Stars, not-for-profit. I hadn't planned on getting up here to talk, but when he said the guys who are running it, their hearts aren't in it, their hearts are in it. Our family opened the Bison Youth Sports Complex with, complex with Nick Cusick's help, we ran it for three years, um, we worked ourselves to the bones and it wasn't profitable. We left there and we found Abbott. Abbott was a mess going into it, but because they needed money, they were willing to let us move our own equipment in from the Bison and fix up that quadrant, and other pla, other programs have fixed up other quadrants, but definitely our heart's in it, um, you know, this weekend for a big tournament we had in Lincoln, we had people within our own club out weed-eating, cleaning the complex, putting their own time and labor and money, just as we do, into the building to try to keep it going. The financial aspects that are a struggle for the building happened well before our club became a part of it, and we haven't been able to overcome that, and, uh, those who, who are in administration there understand and know that. We're looking at having to move to a third location, uh, in the twenty-two years my husband has been coaching, it actually would be a fourth, because like, uh, one of the other speakers said, the LPS became not viable for us because of the cost of renting the space and the competition for it. So, we started out doing LPS, we opened the Bison Sports Complex, which now is owned by LPS, we moved out to Abbott, we got that going, um, and now we're looking at having to look at another location, and there are a lot of people who can't afford the money that's needed to pay, play youth sports, those who can, they go to the better and bigger places, um, we just, we have some who are true to the, the programs, but as, uh, Andrew so emotionally said as well, is the kids that we're serving now happen to be kids whose families can't pay the fees to play, and we don't turn any wa, anybody away because of that. Um, that along with a recent unfortunate case where we had an employee embezzle from the Cornhusker Shooting Stars program, those are all setbacks that make it harder and harder for kids to be able to play. We're doing the best we can, um, I'd like you guys to look at the rezoning, because once you do rezone it from H to I, we're out, we're in that quadrant, that building, I was surprised to hear the developer not know that that's the building where all these sports were played out of. If we could move us outside of that zone, three-hundred feet, so that the building could stay in place and they could build their own warehouse, that would be great. I do also believe the city needs to help out more, and we go to all these places around in other cities and states, play in fabulous gyms, supported by either the city or independently wealthy folks, and that's not us. My husband works on the north side of town, I'm a teacher, I work in a building with high-needs kids, and, um, there's a need for that facility out there for these kids.
Any questions? Does your organization rent the entire facility and then sublease, or how does that?
Um, I'll let my husband speak to the details of that, but he's on the board now, and the only reason he got onto the board was to help try to cash flow, um, the building, so that we could have- so that we could have a place to play, but our quadrant is what we run. We have also, like the others have said, a lot of equipment in that building, um, Nick Cusick helped us when we started Bison and we moved the, the hoops and the flooring and everything out to Abbott, so if any of these organizations left, they would take their equipment and it would essentially just be a warehouse.
Thank you.
I think one of the reasons too, that like the baseball organization said we're not paying a lot, well, it's hard to ask people to pay a lot when we know there's an offer on the table and, and we're doing month-to-month leases and nobody knows the plight of what's gonna happen in our future, including us, and so, sure, we'll take anybody's money because it's gonna, it's gonna help us cash flow and, and maybe be able to keep it as a sports complex, but, um, that's tough to do when you don't know the future of the, the site.
So you were aware that the building was up for sale, or the complex?
The board was aware.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of these items?
My name's Jim Bavard, I'm thirty-four, thirty-five, South Seventy-Ninth Street, uh, down the east side of, of town, formerly seventy-seven, forty-four Rutledge, so in the northeast part of town. I don't really represent anybody formerly at Abbott, um, I am a parent volunteer with the Cornhusker Shooting Stars, I brought my, three of my daughters here today so they can get a little lesson in civics, especially my freshman daughter, since she just took the course at Easts last year. Yeah, I do run Extreme Soccer, which is a small, uh, soccer club here in town, so we don't have a home, we rent a space a- at various places around. Um, Speedway Village is awesome, it's beautiful, that place is great, but I'm not paying two-hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour for indoor field time, where I can get it at Abbott for seventy-five to a hundred, we're, we're an at-cost organization, uh, I don't charge my parents anything more than what I have to pay out, and we don't pay anybody, we're volunteers. Um, as a volunteer for the Cornhusker Shooting Stars, you know, I spent the, the tournament that was referenced a little bit ago this past weekend, I volunteered my time for thirty hours Saturday and Sunday, uh, alone, I, between the coaching and the volunteer time with the youth sports organizations, I probably spend, not tournament weekends, probably twenty hours a week volunteering for, for youth sports. Uh, I feel very passionately that this, that the niche that Abbott provides for Lincoln can't be matched, and if this zoning happens, especially the main building, 'cause that's where the majority of the, of the, the kids that come through the Abbott Sports Complex come through, that is not a positive thing for our community, especially the north side of town. Right? Speedway's fancy, it's great, and it costs a lot of money, and so they have to charge a lot of money to be able to pay that back. The Y's in town are fabulous, uh, especially the, the shiny new ones in Fallbrook and now down in southeast, those areas have the tax, the, the tax base, the population, they're willing to spend their money on, on utilization of those facilities. Abbott serves a different need, and to, a- as Coach Cook mentioned, uh, it needs a facelift. We don't need to construct a new facility, we need to maintain the one that we've had for almost twenty-five years now. It needs a facelift, it needs the same care that any of our homes that are twenty-five years old need in terms of the regular maintenance, and I lay some of that on the Abbott Foundation. Uh, I do know several of the individuals who are involved in the Lincoln Sports Foundation currently, I do know, uh, the, a lot of the, the club operators within, uh, that are currently at the Abbott Sports Complex now and those who were there previously, uh, and I think as Mrs. Lesswing just mentioned, yeah, it's not for lack of trying, it's lack for, of not having anything else to do in terms of maintaining that, there wasn't a long-term maintenance plan set up for the facility. I, I, I hope Speedway Village, um, has one, so that in fifteen, twenty years, it's not going through the same process, right? We don't need more warehouses, we can drive down Seventieth Street and see all the warehouses, the Fifty-Sixth Street corridor there north, you can see all the warehouses, you can do a search of the open warehouses currently. We don't need another warehouse, our, our kids need to be served, as Angelo said, the demographic that Angelo serves with, uh, the Guidance to Serve Organization, those are the kids that are utilizing the Abbott Sports Foundation, uh, facility there, yeah, that's what, it would be short-sighted to, uh, to rezone, to allow this industrial use and not look at the bigger picture facing Lincoln and Lancaster County, so, I'll answer any questions or otherwise, thank you for your time.
Questions? Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Tori Ryan, fifty-three hundred Rockford Drive, I wish that I had brought my kids today, I'm just a mom, I remember my, um, oldest when he started to play soccer at the fields there at Abbott, I live in the north end of Lincoln, and I'm actually a homeschooling mom too. I've been using Abbott for several things for many, many years, from when my kids were little and played soccer there to now, we have a group of homeschool parents, I've seen the, um, Cornhusker Stars play basketball there, I see the VC Nebraska volleyball play there, I see tons and tons of kids that are served by this facility. Personally, our group of homeschool parents uses it in the afternoons and, um, plays various sports there, we've done flag football, we've done volleyball, we've done basketball, and it's very helpful to have something like that on the north end of Lincoln. We've also gone to Speedway Village, and it is very beautiful, it's a, it's a nice facility and they've been great to work with as well, but it is a long ways away, and it's nice to have things on both ends to serve families on both ends, and also Sporting Village doesn't have the option of the volleyball for us or the basketball at this point. You've heard many people mention it, and you've heard many people mention that there aren't enough of these things, we keep mentioning Sporting Village, but nothing else, and if we lose this, then we won't have anything else but that. Before, when Bison was actually in operation, we also used Bison, and then we lost that, and so we're lucky to have both Abbott and Sporting Village, but if we lose Abbott, then that's all we have left and it can't serve all of our needs. My homeschool group will have about, um, sixty to seventy kids, and we do like seven-week sessions and meet once a week and play these sports throughout during the year, so it's serving a big need for us because there isn't anywhere else for us to go, we can't use the schools and we can't use the Y's, and being an afternoon program is a really great time fit for Abbott, I know they've appreciated us there. I can't speak to the management, I can only speak to how I've dealt with the management, and they've always been wonderful to work with, very kind, they have been very, very affordable, which is great, because then that doesn't cost our parents quite as much to play there too, so, it's been dear to my heart for a while, and like I said, I'm just a mom, but I wanted to at least share my opinion. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition?
I don't really know how to do this, but...
Just introduce yourself and give your address, please.
I'm Lizzy Lesswing, um, and my address is six thousand one, the Knowles. Um, I'm here with teammates.
Um, I'm Ellie Bavard, thirty-four, thirty-five, South Seventy-Ninth Street.
I'm Susie Bavard, thirty-four, thirty-five, South Seventy-Ninth Street.
And we use Abbott nine hours a week and more, just for practice, and then tournament weekends, we usually spend like all day there, so we have lots of memories.
What sport do you guys play?
Basketball.
Very good.
I just wanna say how proud I am of you three for getting up and doing this, this is awfully hard to do even as an adult, so thank you for being brave and speaking, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition?
Thank you for your time, I know we've spent a lot of time on this issue, but I feel like I have to, if they were brave enough to speak, then I'd be brave enough to. Um, I'm a retired public health nurse, I worked for the State...
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, uh, my name is Sue Bowden, I live at seventy-one, fifty-three, South Ninety-fourth Court. Uh, I'm a re- retired public health nurse, I worked for the, the State Department of Health in Kansas until I retired to move up here to be with my wonderful granddaughters so that I could be involved in their lives, and I've spent many hours at the Abbott Sports Complex, and I've seen the needs that that facility has served. I've been to other, other facilities across the nation, and it's kind of embarrassing to come back home to Abbott Sports Complex because it lacks so much, but what it lacks in physical things, it should be taken care of by the foundation, since it is their facility, it makes up for in heart. Uh, it's been mentioned that for the Shooting Stars in particular, that kids aren't turned away because of inability to pay, and there are individuals who will provide scholarships so that those kids can play and be on an equal footing with any of the kids who have parents with the resources to be able to do that for them. As a public health nurse, it's important that we think about the youth of our nation, both their emotional well-being, and I think that's been spoken to already, but also to their physical well-being, and to have a facility such as this, poor as it is, filling the needs that it ful- fills, it would be a travesty if this commission decided to zone this area industrial and take away this resource for the kids of our community, please, please consider that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of these two items? We have questions for Andrew, staff questions, you wanna come up?
I, I wanna circle back to the very first question that we had about the, um, the existing tenants and their opportunity to go forward with what they have in place right now, once the zoning is, if that does move forward, and we go from H2 to I1, um, and those are primarily youth sports that are using that building, um, even though the, 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 uh, industrial use may not be coming for some time, yet that those, it's my understanding that that zoning change would change the ability of those organizations to use the space.
Yeah, I'm glad that was brought up, so, so the zoning agreement as written at the moment says yes, uh, any youth recreational uses need to be at least three hundred feet from the I1, uh, an option could be amending this zoning agreement as a condition of, uh, this, if you decide to approve it, um, amending it to say the remain, uh, existing tenants can remain for some amount of time or indefinitely, I, I don't know what the number would be, but, uh, we, we could amend this zoning agreement to address that issue.
Other questions?
Andrew, the private owner could in fact just close down.
Yeah, um, as, as I said earlier, it is zone H2 highway business today, they could, they could close it right now and redevelop it into a retail center or something like that.
Or you said vehicle.
Yeah, there, there's a wide range of uses that could be in H2, so, uh, yeah, it, it could be shut down and redeveloped into one of those uses today.
And so...
Without any action of this board.
Yeah, really, as, as Andrew Willis mentioned, the change to I1 is really for this client to allow the warehouse use.
So as of today, they could do, they can just walk out today.
Yeah.
So, back to what you said about potentially amending the zoning agreement, do you, do you have a recommendation, you said for a period of time or, or indefinitely, and if we were thinking about doing that, do, do we need to have a round again of input of the parties involved?
I think at the very least, we'd wanna talk with the applicant when I'm done, to see what, what their thoughts are on that.
In, in your view, would there be any problems with the indefinite number?
Well, the one problem that it could come into play is if some of the tenants remained and then there was some sort of dangerous industrial use next door or something, that's, that's not something we would want to happen, um, but I think...
If we had a condition provided, no dangerous industrial use is...
Something like that, yeah, yes, um, I think that there's a way to do it correctly, so it's not creating a health risk if these uses remain.
And if we were to do that, would the time to do that be here now, or would your recommendation be a deferral to work, work that out?
Um, I think we wanna see what the applicant has to say about the timing on, on what their thoughts are on any of these, these conditions.
And it's my understanding that the applicant is the prospective owner, not the current owner.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we have not heard anything from the current owner about...
No.
Any other questions? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal.
Um, unfortunately, I don't have a good response to many of the statements in opposition because those are really addressed towards the current owner, I, the, the current owner put this up for sale, and presumably, it's, it's a financial decision on their part, and it was put up for sale, and so, um, it's, unfortunately, that's, the, the applicant is the prospective buyer, it's under contract, and, and as part of the due diligence, uh, we're looking at options of developing it, um, the, as was mentioned, it is H2, it could be developed into certain commercial uses, uh, we do believe there is a need for, um, a, a larger industrial type park and a warehouse, a larger-sized warehouses, and so that, that's what the I1 would do, but the H2 is, it's still possible to develop it. Um, it was developer's intention to not interfere with the current leases, and so I know we'd support a change of the conditional, the, the zoning agreement to at least, um, run through the, through the term of those leases, 'cause again, that was, it was, it was not the intention to interfere with the current leases at all. Um, that, I can offer that, and I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Questions?
If this change of zone isn't approved, as it progresses through city council and all the proper channels, um, is your client not interested in buying the property?
Um, I don't know the answer to that, but this, I mean, it certainly, um, as part of the conditions is, is, is the change of zone to I1, I mean, that's, that's currently one of the conditions to pur- purchasing it, so, that's the, that's the intent and...
Would your client be open to a, a two-week delay so that we can address some of these questions, get some things ironed out?
But unfortunately, I ju- I just tried to call him, well, and to see if I could get ahold of him, um, the short answer is because of the way the contract is written, we really are in a tight timeframe, so I understand if, if that has to be done, but it would, uh, as far as, uh, due diligence and, and working through this contract, we don't have a lot of time to work with, um, and I, and I tried to reach him, and, and if, I mean, it's, if it's possible, he might call me back, we wanna postpone this till the end of the, you know, the, the vote until later in the meeting, I, I, I could offer that to try and get ahold of him, but, um...
I don't think we can do that, I think we have to move on this, at this point.
We can do that.
We can?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So I, I think the short of it...
We've been told this is gonna be a long meeting, I mean, are you willing to stay that long?
I, I'd prefer not to, but, uh, but I'm trying to be...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we wanna do that, and do we have to do that with a motion to, or do we just hold off on making that vote?
Uh, Steve Hendrickson of the Planning Department, yes, I, I think you can just basically, if, if there's agreement at the commission, we, you can hold the vote on that item and, and move to your next item, and then we'll just make it clear later in the meeting that you're readdressing that item.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So just to be clear to everyone, we will, uh, delay the vote on this until we get some clearer understanding from the prospective owner on, uh, their, whether we defer on this.
Are we ready to proceed then?
Yep.
Okay, the next item under public hearing is change of zone number one seven zero one-one from A.G. Agricultural District to R3 Residential District for approximately twenty-five-point-five-three acres more or less on property generally located at North Forty-Ninth Street and Alvo Road, staff recommendation is for approval, are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this matter?
I see none. Andrew?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff, uh, so this is a change... So this is a change of zone near 56 and Elvo. It's North Bank Junction. It's 25 and a half acres. So right, actually I have a better... So you can see there's the existing R3 area here. Right now, there are three or two outlots that would be changed here. This would be R3, R3, R3. Two of the outlots would be changed to R3 for urban development. This was part of the North Bank Junction. It's a preliminary plat that was approved in 2003. So as part of this, as it develops, it's changed from AG to R3 as, as lots are platted and the houses are built. So that, that's really what we're doing right now is this is the area of the change of zone. This is the area of the change of zone. And then there's an outlot for detention. That's also part of this change of zone. So this is somewhat of a formality. The lots are already approved. The developer just needs to get the change of zone to R3 and then they can do the final plat and build on those lots. There, as I mentioned, there's an out spot or an outlot for detention in open space. The zoning wouldn't change that. It would, it would stay an outlot for detention in open space. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Applicant?
Marcia Kinning with Rega Engineering Group, 601 Old Chaney Road, Suite A. And I'm here to represent the applicant. He is Roger Shweizow and he's the owner of the whole development of North Bank Junction, which is also North Bank Preserve. It's a little different. But it is just a change of zone, just like you said, to make it so that we can turn them into lots.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of this item?
Good afternoon and thank you commissioners for opening this for public hearing. My name's Leanne Johnson and I live at 5017 Becky's Way. And that is right in the heart of the current R3 residential area. You are looking at rezoning from AG to R3. What I want to say is I'm not in opposition of moving from AG to residential. What I am is I'm pro neighborhood. I'm pro community. I'm pro development. But I'm pro responsible development. And I think it's important as a community member, as a neighbor that lives in this North Bank Preserve, that I get up and speak. And I think it's important that when things happen around our neighborhoods, we don't stand in our streets and talk about what's being done to us or around us. And we don't wring our hands and say, oh, we wished it would have been done different, but never get before our elected officials and share our thoughts and our ideas. So like I said, my main reason for being here today is to ask you as the planning commission and to make you aware of that, again, we're not against the development. We're not against the zoning. But the developer is not responsible. He is not... He doesn't communicate well with those of us that live in the neighborhood. The most recent rains that we had have closed Elvo Road. It has left the road with mud, sludge, and impassable. There is not enough drain, storm. I am talking lingo that I have no clue what I'm talking about, but I am learning this as a result of living in this neighborhood. But there's not enough storm drainage for the amount of development that is going on in that area. And as this has expanded, if the developer continues to develop it in the way that it's been developed, we are going to have huge problems. There is one storm drain, actually two now, since they've put one in south of us, that is handling all of the rain and the runoff. I have since found out that doing curb cutouts are legal, but we have curb cutouts that are handling sump pump issues and drainage issues from property that is currently residential in that area. So there, there's a lot of things going on with that development. Again, I love our neighborhood. I am a pro neighborhood person and the neighbors out there love the neighborhood. We just want our neighborhood to be taken care of and to be developed in a way that's responsible. Again, I'm not against the Ag land and going to residential. When we purchased out there, we knew that potential was coming. But we feel like the developer needs to do a better job of communicating how things are progressing. We're, we're an active neighborhood. We are a neighborhood that's mixed. We're diverse. We have young families. We're a hardworking neighborhood and we just want our property to be respected and we want the developer to be aware that when he's not putting in the proper drain systems, et cetera, our properties are the ones that end up paying the brunt of it. So I will answer any questions.
Any questions? Have you tried to communicate or what?
Yeah, we do try to communicate. And we get responses of we will, I will fix this, or I will come out and look at it, or it's always somebody else's fault. It's the previous builder's fault. But there's never an onus of responsibility that he takes. We've had meetings where he's been present and has committed that he would help to try to get things fixed. For example, right along our property, we were told that because a fence got put up, it rerouted the water, which then ends up in our lawn and causes problems for us, that he would help get the fence raised because that's what was affecting the flow. I, I question that, but again, nothing ever happens with it. So I'm, I'm, again, I'm here not to, to bash the developer other than the fact I think he needs to be responsible. And if he's going to take on additional residential development in that area, I want to make sure it's done responsibly. Again, I just, I'm, I'm a neighbor that wants our neighborhood to be the best neighborhood it can be. And Lincoln prides itself in strong neighborhoods. And North Bank Preserve is a growing neighborhood and it's going to be a very active neighborhood in ensuring that we're, that it's being developed in the right way. Thank you.
I have a question. Are the issues related to current construction? Are there things under construction or is it related to previous construction that now has drainage issues? Or is it a mix of both?
It's a mix. It's a mix. And quite frankly, I'm, I'm surprised. Again, I'm, I don't know all of this about planning, et cetera, but I was really kind of surprised when we got the letter about it not being zoned already because they were pouring streets in this area. In the area on North 50th Street, they, they had street development going on and then boom, all of a sudden it stopped and the zoning notice got put up and then we got the letter in the mail. So there's just, there's some things that aren't quite right with this development. And as a neighbor and as a resident out there, I want to make sure that it's getting taken care of. Because there's a lot, a lot of growth going on in that area.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
My name's Mark Geesler. I live at 7401 North 50th Street. I live out in this neighborhood. I'd just like to echo Leanne's comments. Moved in about two years ago. Bought, the house I purchased was a model home. There was nothing on our side of the street at that time. We just had empty lots. Since then, there's been a house that's been put up. One of the things we've always talked about when we get together is who signs off on the elevation because it seems whoever has the newest building is up on a hill and then the people below gets punished for, with all their water drained off. Same thing, the sump pumps draining out in the street. It looks to me obnoxious. Any given day, you'll see water in the street, even in the winter, obviously. I mean, right now, if I try to go out for a walk or any of the neighbors or the kids are out, there's water everywhere on the streets with mosquitoes. And of course, obviously a concern of West Nile and all that. That's just some of the issues we've had with the developer. When they were doing, I believe they're doing sewer work to the north of my property. There is a contractor out there and he stated that due to the work they were doing, they were letting go of all the water they were hitting when they were doing their work. And it was all that water was going behind my house, which was coming into my property in my backyard. The back 15 feet of my grass sod was totally underwater for over two and a half weeks due to there's no drainage. And I tried to contact the developer. He said he'd do what he could. It continued and now my sod looks awful due to the drainage. And even talking to those contractors, they said due to the way, there's no, no slope out there whatsoever. So the water just sets. It has nowhere to go. That's been the big concern of mine. And some of the other things we've got going out there, I can speak to the entrance. There's one way in, one way out. When we get this water, it's been flooded. You can't get in, can't get out. If there'd be emergency, thank God there hasn't been, but what would be, you know, what's the plan of action? If we can't get in there now, there's probably about 30 houses out there, maybe. If they're looking to put in more, like, to me, that'd be a concern. There's only one way in and one way out. And if it gets shut because we get a heavy downpour one of those nights, what's, what's the course of action and, you know, how can we avoid that? That's why we're here, I guess, speaking against it today is we want people, we want you guys to know that there's been an issue. It's been there almost two years and that's happened a number of times now. And then another thing I'd just like to point out, further south, about a half mile from my house, not even that probably, there are two bald eagles nests right there, which if they keep going that way, I would think people would want to be respective of that. They're down there all the time, so. I just, those are some of the points I'd like to make, I guess, if you guys have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition?
I'll give it pretty short. My name's Pat Cappas. I'm at 5017 Becky's Way.
Speaking of the microphone right there.
Okay, okay. Pat Cappas, 5017 Becky's Way. To Dennis's question, is it current construction or past construction? And it's, it's actually both. There's no good answer, but one of the communication things from the developer is that he approves every housing plan first. And in certain circumstances, he's allowed elevation that has cost problems. One of the neighbors in the back has a backyard that's always flooded and electrical boxes are there and they're in water, cable boxes. Kids play. And we just don't think it's a very safe thing. And we got the same thing on our yard from his lot next door, which water goes in and always floods the area. So again, we're not against development. We just want it to be right. And if it needs to go back to wastewater flood management area, that's good. But with this development that you're changing, the next one will be the further north. It goes north of Elvo all the way up that another developer owns. And if all that comes down our way, it's just going to be compounded. So I'm asking you to think about this long-term, not just today's viewpoint. And if it really is, and there's a lot of other neighbors that couldn't make it today who have the same problems. But we're, we're just trying to make it as good as we can and not have problems perpetrated into the future for something that could become a lot worse down the road. So, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Voldenall. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker. I live on 5010 Becky's Way. Pat and Leanne and Mark, they're my neighbors and the kids that they were talking about aren't mine. Or some of them. This is currently our backyard. You can see the electrical box.
Just a minute. There you go.
Sorry. You can see the electrical box is right here. This is at least a three-foot high up bank from our property line. And both of the townhomes gutters are facing right to our property line. So whenever it rains, floods, whatever, it gets surrounded right here. Again, I have kids, safety and electricity with water. The future planning zone of the street that they're planning building is this road right here. Again, you can see how high that lot is to this current property line. Where is all this runoff coming? Right here. This is also another picture of the same thing. Here's another electrical box. This is your future road that you're planning building. That's your embankment. Where is that water going? And then this is an overall picture of that future road and all the houses. If all these are houses, again, the water will be sitting in this little ditch. What is the proper use of drainage? If you have any questions, that's all I really wanted to show you guys.
So is that an extension of North 50th Street? Is that what that road is that you're referring to? Going north and south?
That's, yes. That's the future road that he wants, Roger wants to be put in.
Okay.
And we've had talked to Roger on all of our issues and we get the same response of, I know about it. I'll do something about it, but nothing has happened.
And your lot is flat, is that right?
Yes.
So there's no drainage beyond your...
No.
Further down?
Yep. We're completely flat. We're on the corner of Becky's Way and I think it's North 50th Street.
And so the water will just sit on your lot?
Yes.
Okay.
And they, we're, where our property is, there's an empty lot there that has not been sold yet. And we've had talked to like landscapers and stuff like that, people that do work with drainage issues. And they said, once a house gets there, it'll only get worse.
Thank you.
And I'm not against future development. It's just, I want issues fixed. So nobody is hurt with any lawsuits or deaths or anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of this item? Do we have questions for staff?
I do. So, first of all, could you, could, could you address the comment that we had about roads and streets and then getting the notification letters? Is there any correlation there that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of. There is a, so the area that was mentioned just to the west, we actually do have a final plat in for that right now and that, that won't be approved until, or if the change of zone is approved. So that's when street improvements come in, is with the final plat. They have to have an EO approved by the city to begin the street construction. I, I don't know if that, where that is in the process. There may have been an EO already approved for the streets.
Okay. Then, so when this gets developed, what will come before us? Is we're going to see a site plan and is that going to be an avenue then to discuss how to address some of these issues and the, and the developer's responsibilities? how to address some of these issues and the, and the developers' responsibilities?
So everything that's been talked about is, is really tied to the preliminary plat. That was originally approved in two thousand and three and then there's been some amendments since then. So no, there's nothing else that will come before, uh, this group. The plats already have been approved. Uh, there is a grading and drainage plan associated with that. Based on these comments, it sounds like maybe something is not working right with that approved plan. Um, so that's something I'd, I'd recommend the residents, uh, contact Watershed Management for that.
Is there someone from Watershed Management here? Jared?
Jared Nelson's here. Um, I mean, if you wanna talk to him, he can come up.
Would you be willing to come up, Jared? I have a question for you, if you would.
But the preliminary plats all in place for Outlot A and is there a similar plat for outlet? The southern outlet as well?
Yeah, it's kinda hard to see. This, this is the Outlot A area.
Okay.
This is the other Outlot area here.
Okay.
So Jared, um, if there's a mix of existing already built issues that are tied to water shed management, grading and drainage, is there any recourse to make sure that what's there is com- has complied with the plan that your department would have reviewed at some point? That's the first part of the question. Second part, I'll just ask both and you can answer. If there is construction that's ongoing, is there some of our erosion control measures that are part of every permitting process? Can those be in play to make sure that some of this can be handled better?
Uh, yeah, I think as far as erosion and sediment control, the, you know, they would have to have a, a plan, a SWIP plan. But that's primarily to control erosion. It doesn't necessarily change grades. I think the, the grades, the draining and gra- the drainage and grading would go back to that preliminary plat. We would've looked at it back in two thousand and three and made sure everything met drainage standards, um, at that time. Uh, so as far as today, if, you know, if it's not, if it doesn't match what's on the grading plan, you know, the, I don't know personally what the recourse would be, uh, or who would go through with that recourse, but I mean, we would be happy to talk to whoever is in the neighborhood and kinda look into that more.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of, of these issues.
Right. Yeah, I understand that you probably, or, I don't, you wouldn't even have been around probably in two thousand and three in the department.
No.
But, um, somebody would've reviewed that back then, fifteen years ago, but I don't know if there's recourse either, but it sounds like maybe some type of review would be helpful to, to the residents.
Yeah. I mean, the developments are, they're supposed to be graded that, to match the grading plan and, um, you know, that's usually, that's checked. Their, the grading is checked at the time that it's developed, so. It, it may be that these future outlots that haven't been fully graded yet, they haven't been checked yet.
Yeah.
And there might be a check at that time.
Okay. So as far as you know, no one from the neighborhood that lives there now has contacted your department?
Uh, I don't know about the depart- department, but myself, no.
How would issues like this get fixed?
Uh, which is, it sounds like there's several issues.
Well, the, the flooding in the, uh, in their backyards.
Uh, you know, that's a good, that's a good question. You know, generally in Lincoln, we don't have ordinances in place about drainage from, you know, one property to another. And so those are usually civil matters that have to get worked out. Uh, but the larger drainage plan is, that's on the grading and drainage plan and, there's ordinances in place that ensures the drainage gets out of the neighborhood, things like that.
So the water in the streets constantly could be handled, maybe?
Can, can you, can you repeat the last part of that question?
Could be handled. I mean, by you or somebody could fix the fact that their streets are always flooded.
It, as far as the streets go in public right of way, yeah, we have the ability to do things in the, in the right of way, but if there's flooding in private property, that's, we don't have the right to do that, yeah. As far as the street system goes and the storm sewer system too, I would add that that in a residential neighborhood, that's designed to handle a five-year storm event. So that's say two to three inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period. I believe on Monday that area had three or four inches of rain in a three-hour period. So our street and storm sewer system would not be able to, to handle that, uh, per design, city standards.
But at the time of building permit, when these existing houses were, were built, the grade should've been checked and verified that it was proper.
At the time of the, the development was graded, yeah, it would've been checked. Now, as far as each lot goes, uh, we, the city doesn't check each lot when each lot is graded. There's, you know, the, the builders and the developers, as they're fine grading each lot, need to take some responsibility to, to do it right.
So the, the topography could've changed a lot since two thousand and three?
It may have.
Some of these issues?
Yeah, it may have. It sounds like as each house gets built, the, the grades get changed a little bit. We do have a, an ordinance in place. I think Building and Safety has it. In regards to making sure that from the house to the street, there's like six inches of fall. I don't know if that was in place back in two thousand and three, though.
Any other questions?
So I'm just, I'm still a little unclear. You know, if you guys go out there and do a check of this, of the grading and how it is right now, um, will the developer have to regrade this to fix some of these problems or, you know, kinda back to that recourse? I mean, what, what's gonna happen?
Well, as far as the, the outlots go, that if they haven't been graded yet and approved yet, when the, after the developer grades that, um, we go out and check to make sure that it matches the approved grading plan. And if it doesn't, then they can't, they can't move on. You know, they wouldn't be able to get building permits. They, that would put a stop on it.
But changes in the elevation of, of the foundations of the houses could cause the plan, the drainage plan to not work correctly.
Yeah, that, it could. The great, you know, the, the grading plan, that's for the site, the, there's probably, you know, contour, contours that represent elevations. They could be two-foot contours or one foot or five foot. And if the whole site is so flat, you know, changing a half a foot or two, that still fits within the approved grading plan. And I think that's a little bit of the problem. You know, our approved grading plan is kind of a macro scale, larger sense of the overall drainage patterns and, and overall grading, but as each lot is graded, there, you know, they could work some of those grades and if it's only changing six inches or so, that would, that would still fall within the approved grading plan. But if they're doing more than that, then yeah, that's where it gets outside of the approved grading plan.
Could be causing the water to flow the wrong direction off of the, the house. Instead of going this way, it could be going that way onto a lower, lower property.
Yeah, and the gra- the grading plan should have drainage basins identified and, and where that should go. And so, yeah, that.
And, and that's checked after it's built, I'm assuming?
When, after it's graded, that, that's checked, yeah.
Any other questions?
Is there a way that we can, um, request a check of the grading plan before we approve this change of zone?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know how that.
The change of zone is kind of a separate topic that we're looking at. Um, basically with the change of zone, we're saying this is identified as future urban residential. So a change of zone is appropriate. Connecting this change of zone to kind of an unrelated watershed issue, I don't, I don't know that we can do that.
My thinking is, is I'm a little hesitant to say, yeah, let's put in more development in there if we're already having water issues. And so, um, I, I guess I, I kinda would like to hold the, the developer's feet to the fire a little bit and say we need to have these issues addressed or at least looked at before we approve you to build a whole bunch more.
And I, I guess I'm, I'm just not a hundred percent sure if we can do that or not.
Well, to Tracy's point, I mean, we're, if, if we add houses, then we're going to add to the drainage issue. And if it's not resolved, there's, there's a problem there. So I, I guess they are related to some.
Yeah, I'm, and as Jared mentioned, as, um, so this would be zoned R three. There'd, it'd be final platted. At that time, uh, it, it may not be, today it may not be graded per the grading plan, right, for the undeveloped outlots?
Uh, right, that could be the case.
So it, there could be new grading going in there that may address these issues, but.
At what point will the grading, uh, program be resolved or, or wh- wh- what point will they have that approved?
Steve Henderson, the Planning Department. I, I'd suggest that all of the discussion about what may or may not be wrong there actually be investigated by the watershed management. Uh, as Jared noted, he hasn't received any complaints. So you asked some good questions on the bigger sense of how all that works. But I, I don't wanna lose track of the fact that we don't know exactly what, what has or has not happened here. And, uh, the item before you is should the change of zone go forward? Um, anytime a citizen has a complaint or concern about how the site is graded, they should really, uh, contact Jared. Uh, Jared will be available for the folks that are here, here hit to pop outside and get some names and numbers and get some, some contact information from them. But we really can't say today what is the cause of this because watershed hasn't had a chance.
I'm asking, can we delay? Because I, if we had to vote today on this change of zone, I think I would vote no because of these water issues. So I'd like to hear some of those answers before I make a vote. And that's why I'm saying, is it possible to delay?
Up to the applicant that they want it to delay. The very narrow item that is before you today is not the enforcement of the watershed issues here. Your item is a very narrow one. Is it change of zone on this property that has already been approved with a preliminary plat laid out for residential lots shown in the comprehensive plan for residential, appropriate for R three? Um, certainly again at the city council, that might be another la- area where the city council, if they wanna hear, has things been worked out? And particularly at that time, they'd have a chance for watershed to go out and look at it. They could. But as a planning commission, your view on, on this particular one is, is certainly rather narrow on it. It's not to say that things shouldn't be fixed. It's just, there's a completely different process to be followed when people have concerns about water and, and what is happening on it. And some of them, the city may be able to resolve. Some of them may just be an issue between adjacent property owners or the original builder and how they graded the site.
And so the preliminary plat never comes before us for approval?
Oh, it, it did. It, it just was a long time ago. It may have been before a lot of the people on, on this body had a chance to vote on it. And that may be why it is, isn't familiar. Uh, but yes, anytime a preliminary plat, CUP, those initial layouts, they'd be reviewed by watershed. And again, as Jared mentioned, it's on the big picture, looking at the item before even any of the grading has taken place. But yes, that, that was approved some time ago.
But if we would approve this now, it would be approved for residential. And at that point, then the developer can move forward with that. And what's to, what's to prevent housing development there if it's going to cause more uh, watershed issues?
What I'm suggesting is that perhaps the, this would still have to go forward to the city council on this particular item. You're not the final action. You're recommending the zoning. That maybe at the time it gets to the city council, that would, as easily because of the July third holiday, gonna be four weeks away. That would allow watershed to have a chance to look into it and report to the city council before they take action. Um, because no more lots can be final platted there until this change of zone is approved. So I, I understand the change of zone. You can certainly recommend approval if you choose, subject to this being further investigated. Um, but I'm suggesting perhaps the city council is better, but that would give watershed a chance to see what is the basis for uh, the concerns and, and find out more information from the neighbors.
Thank you. Anything else? I'm sorry, we're, we're finished with, uh, testimony for the support and denial. Let's see, we will move to applicant rebuttal.
Um, not kidding. There you go. Um, I don't know if this is gonna show up or not. Okay. The final plat that's right now under construction and the reason for the delay in construction is due to a lot of people are building in Lincoln right now. And the sewer and water, um, contractor was not able to get out there for a long period of time. So it was graded, it was all ready to go, but they could not get the contractor out there to actually put the sewer and water in. That's the delay in construction along Alva Road. And this is the area that's actually final platted in third addition right now, which the paving is going to be put in or is being put in at this time. So that's where all this, in the street, I think, came from, is that, that addition. Fourth addition that we just turned in is Outlot A and those EOs have not even been turned into the city yet. So, that's not being developed.
Do you have a timeline on when the person that's gonna do that work on the existing R three is gonna come out and, and do that?
Like I said, um, sewer and water now have, have been put in. And the paving is being put in as we speak. So it, it's going forward now. But there was a long time that was a delay because I think he was ready last in the wintertime for it to actually happen. And we just couldn't get, due to weather.
Recently was it done?
I'm thinking last month is when the sewer and water was able to get put in.
What assurances can you provide to the residents that have spoken this, today about the issues that they're having with flooding and?
In the rear yards?
Yes.
I, I just need to have them understand that that area is gonna have to go through the EO process, which is showing what the grades are doing in that area. And I'm thinking.
What's EO?
Um, executive orders for the sewer, water, paving, storm, all of that. And it also includes a SWIP, which is the erosion control measures. And on that plan, it'll show what all of the elevation should be for the, the lots. Especially those back lots.
And so the developer plans on fixing all of this?
I, I'm thinking that's gonna get taken care of during that process. I know we'll be working with watershed also, 'cause when we submit these EOs, he's gonna be looking at that, especially since now we know of all this opposition that we do have and, and problems. So those are gonna get worked out during the EO process as well. I kinda wanted to point out too, that the preliminary plat, we've had amendments to that since two thousand and three. And they were grading plans that were approved. Um, it wasn't something that had to come before a planning commission. It was just an administrative amendment. But the grading plan has been changed since two thousand and three and has gone through the Planning Department and and Public Works.
I'm wondering if perhaps, um, and I don't expect you to know the answer today, um, perhaps there needs, I mean, are, are the neighbors reaching out to the wrong person when they're calling, you know? Can we maybe get something out to them that says, here's your point of contact so that they know who to, who to call or email or whatever it takes to?
They are doing the right thing. They are contacting Roger Shweezao and, and they're doing the right thing. It's just us as engineers, we did not, um, have Roger come to us and, and ask us to help him with solutions to that problem. So now we know and we can maybe reach out and give him some of those solutions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so you're saying because those other lots weren't graded, that's why they're having problems in their backyards?
I know that this future grading is gonna help, um, but I'm not, I don't know how, where they actually put their home in in relation to that backyard line. So I know that the, the pedestals, electrical pedestals need to be at a certain elevation. They need to be one foot above base flood elevation. So that's where they're set. The drainage that goes through there, especially like it was pointed out before, some of this rain, we've been getting rain like crazy. Um, and, and we can't, we can't account for, for that. Um, it's gonna happen.
Any other questions?
Well, ju- just a clarification. I, I don't think probably the water that they're seeing around their
I don't think probably the water that they're seeing around their pedestals are due to a floodplain issue. I think it's probably the micro watershed within even a backyard that maybe something's not draining the right way, sounds to me, anyway. So I think that's the issue. And the question that we're having, and I agree with Steve, that this is not exactly relevant to the issue that we vote on. But it's important for these people who live out there to know where they can go to try to resolve those kinds of property issues, really.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're right. It's the developer, and then you need to have a role in that somehow.
Right.
To help.
Yeah.
So.
And I think when these utilities get put in sometimes, too, that gets created because they don't go back and actually get things, I'm missing my words, compacted around those pedestals. So then you get those holes. LES and all the other electrical companies and all that, they need to get that compacted enough as well. So I think that's kind of another thing that's happening.
Will you pass all these comments on to the developer?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. And I hope that you guys don't delay it two weeks and do allow it to go on to city council with your recommendation that they find out about the grading issues to see once what watershed comes up with and what we can tell them about it. Like I said, it is the change of zone. It's not these grading issues that we're actually voting on. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have one item. I entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just looking at this from a pretty narrow perspective as a planning commissioners. Our job is to determine appropriate land use. And the question is, is this land appropriate for R3 or is it not? I think it is. The comp plan identifies the future land use as future urban residential. There's a preliminary plat in place. I am not moving to attach a condition of investigation because I don't think we know exactly what we're investigating here. And I don't want to put a sort of complicated burden on watershed. Instead, I would encourage all interested parties to contact watershed management as quickly as possible so that some of those findings can go before the city council and so that they have as much information as possible. But I think as far as our decision here today, appropriate land use, I believe it is. And I will support the application.
I agree completely with Maya, just completely so.
I agree with Maya, too. And I think we've given the neighborhood some opportunities to communicate with people now and try to get things worked out. And plus, they have options of putting signs in their yards if things don't get fixed. And sometimes that's what makes action work, too, so.
Others?
I understand that this is just a change of zone, but I also, from a neighborhood's perspective, a lot of times neighbors don't know who to reach out to and who the appropriate person is. So I appreciate you guys coming forward and bringing this to our attention because now we can point you in the right direction and hopefully get this resolved before it gets any worse. So I will support the change of zone, but I do want to go on the record that city council makes sure that watershed has looked into some of these issues before they make their decision.
Anyone else?
I'm going to support the motion, although I hesitate because I feel that if the developer has failed in grading so far, what assurances do the neighbors get that he's going to do it going further on? So hopefully, these things will be discussed in the next couple, four weeks while this is under investigation and we'll get it to the city council. So, Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for the approval of change of zone 17011. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Steve Henderson, the Planning Department. We'd ask that you go back to the previous item, as Andrew Willis has had an opportunity to talk with the applicant. Andrew? Is Andrew here, or do we just take the? Yes, he is here. I think it would probably be proper just to call the items back up again.
Okay. Okay. Item 1.2A is comprehensive plan conformance, number 170. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right. No, I'm sorry. Item 1.3A, comprehensive plan amendment, number 17005, to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use plan designation from open space and commercial to industrial and agricultural stream corridor on property generally located at North 70th Street and Arbor Road. And the associated item is item 1.3B, change of zone, number 17016, from H2 Highway Business District to I1 Industrial District on property generally located at 7620 North 70th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval of the change of zone and approval of the comprehensive plan amendment.
Andrew Willis, again, I just wanted, I had a chance to talk to my client and asked about a possible delay and what their position would be. Unfortunately, just on the timing of the contract, it really doesn't work. So they've requested that we don't delay and go forward with a vote today.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, or anything else that, discussion with the developer?
I mean, I think it's all the, for, I mean, it's been said, I think. I think I?
Okay.
Could you clarify one thing for me? You said, you said you were, be willing to accept the zoning agreement running, allowing the sports activities to run through the leases?
Yeah, correct. And that was our intention all along. And certainly, to the extent we need to have that in that conditional zoning agreement, that we're fully supportive of that, through those terms of those leases. And then just not sure what's going to happen after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I entertain a motion. We need to call them separately, though.
Okay. This would be for a comprehensive plan amendment, number 17005, to amend the comp plan to change the future land use designation from open space and commercial to industrial and agricultural stream corridor on property located at North 70th Street and Arbor Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Entertain a motion? Anyone to vote?
I'm going to move approval, just to start it.
Okay.
Okay. Second, for the same reason.
Discussion?
I think I'm going to support it because that building could possibly be gone at the end of October, November, anyway. I know there's a lot of compelling reasons to have a building like that, but this is, unfortunately, private enterprise and private ownership, and they can make that tough decision to get rid of that building by the end of the year, anyway, or to reuse it, I guess. So whether it's H or I, they can get it reused.
Others?
Yeah, I'll go at some point. Here we go. Yeah, I agree with Ken. I don't know if we need to add a condition to what Maya referred to. I think I'd be comfortable with that because I don't really just want to go forward with your word. Your word's good, but it'd be good to have a condition in this. This is complicated because this is not the applicant's fault that we're in this situation. That needs to be said. The applicant said that, but I want to say that for the record. This is an issue that is an owner issue. The applicant is just responding to an opportunity. And I think that the way our land use, comprehensive plan, zoning, all of that is tied to opportunity, when we get right down to it. So I agree with Ken that things can happen to this land right now that would not require any action by us, one way or the other, and everything could go away, anyway. So the owner has the right to do with his property what the owner wants to do. So I'm going to support it, but I would like to see if there's interest with commission members about adding the condition about the existing leases. I think that would be a good thing.
Others?
Dennis, you've brought up a lot of important points that reflect my thinking as well. It's very similar to the previous issue that we just voted on in that the discrete issue that's in front of us is about a change of zone and not necessarily about what's going on with the property right now. And they can, the opportunity to sell that property can take this away from all the youth organizations that are using that space right now. And there would be nothing that we could do about it. I hope that some of the testimony that brought forth, that people brought forth today, gives the current owner some opportunities to think about, what are the options? What could we do to involve other stakeholders and engage people in a conversation in this community about the lack of sports facilities, the opportunities for at-risk youth and other folks who use that property on a very regular basis? And so I guess I would hope that that conversation could continue as this moves forward. The issue that's in front of us, though, is different than that. And that change of zone does not necessarily change the opportunity to take that away from the sports groups. And for that reason, I feel somewhat helpless, but feel like I have to support the motion.
Others?
My grandchildren are involved in sports, so my heart hurts for you. I am really sorry. But it is a private business. It's been up for sale since Thanksgiving. It would be like if Ivana Cone wanted to sell their business, we couldn't stop them, even if we wanted to stop them. And I just use that as an example, just so we're, there's no rumor out there. Yeah. But the owner does have the right to sell his property or to just walk away from his property. And that, the city has no involvement in that. So for that reason, I, too, am going to support this. I hope that the owner will rethink, but I'm not sure they will. And I don't wish a contract to fail at the same time, but maybe there are other possibilities. And I am pained to do this, but I will support it.
I would support adding, amending the motion to add that verbiage in there. And if I take a narrow standpoint and look at just the zoning, the industrial zoning does fit in there. It wouldn't be a spot zoning or anything like that. So I will support the motion, but I will also state that for all of you that came out today, you know, this stuff has to go before city council. So make sure you're voicing your opinions to them and getting the word out there. And if I had a lot of money, I would buy it. But from a planning perspective, we have to let business take its course.
Tracy, do you want to offer a friendly amendment?
Sure. I'll move that we amend so that we put kind of that, however you guys want to word it here, the condition.
This is the comp plan amendment. That'd be an appropriate amendment for the change of zone.
Okay.
Thank you.
So?
We'll offer that.
Has amended?
For the change of zone.
And can you all accept that?
The next motion.
For the next item, right?
Okay. So, okay, gotcha. Anyone else?
I would just say, as evidenced by the fact that nobody really wanted to move this, it's not, when you look at it from a land use perspective, there's nothing really wrong with the zone that's being suggested here. It's, we hesitate because of what is taking away. And as we've said here, if we somehow had a way to, by voting no today, have this business continue and/or have this organization continue, I think it would be a different vote today. But I will support it, but with a heavy heart.
I think that's it, except me. I'm very torn on this. It's a tough one. I'm actually not going to support this. I think the current business is apparently not viable. I'm not sure that it ever will be. The current owner is a foundation, which amazes me that a foundation can't keep something like this going. I would hope that they could find a solution that provides, you know, this type of facility. I guess the issue that I have is if this changes, then it changes forever, and I'm not ready to make that decision at this point. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this would be for the approval of comprehensive plan amendment 17005. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Okay, next item, which is the associated change of zone 17016, from H2 Highway Business District to I1 Industrial District on property generally located at 7620 North 70th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. And there is a desire to add a condition to the zoning agreement to allow the leases to run through the terms, the current terms of the existing leases.
I entertain a motion.
Move approval as amended. Core?
Thank you.
Second.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Weber.
Thank you. May motion as amended. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Okay, moving on.
Jerry, you want to take a break?
Sure.
Take five minute break.
Take a five-minute break.
Actually, that was the incorrect item, and it's item 1.6.
1.6.
It's a 1.7, isn't it?
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, it's 1.7, and that is correct. But there's only two items before it, and they'd be called together.
Okay.
So, I believe staff is saying that those two items shouldn't take long. Can we just retain-
Just move forward? Okay.
Okay. The next two items are associated. Item 1.5A is change of zone number 17014 from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at Southwest 25th Street and West Denton Road. Staff recommendation is for approval, and the associated item is item 1.5B special permit number 17021 for an AGR Agricultural Residential District Community Unit Plan to include nine acreage lots on approximately 25.12 acres, more or less on property generally located at Southwest 25th Street and West Denton Road. And this is final action. On this special permit, unless appealed to the clerk within 14 days, staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I see none. Tom?
Tom Chaka, planning staff. These applications, as Jerry said, change of zone from agriculture to agricultural residential and a community unit plan for nine lots. This is over approximately 25 acres located on the north side of West Denton and Southwest 27th Street. The area is surrounded on three sides by AGR zoning on the north, west, and south. There is AG zoning to the east, but off of this picture, on Cottington is right off this map, and on the east side of Cottington is also AGR zoning. So there's only, I believe, two parcels here that are left as agricultural zoning. The community unit plan, actually, where's this one? Is for nine lots. There'd be eight lots, eight lots new at the northern end, and then one lot for the existing house that's on the parcel today. Access would come off, these lots would come off of the new extension of, what is this, 25th, Southwest 25th Street, with two lots taking access off of Jack's Lane. Jack's Lane is a gravel street now. This portion is, 25th is also gravel. This will remain gravel, and the new street is gravel also. The subdivision ordinance allows streets to be gravel if they're outside the city limits and will not be annexed. This is within three miles of the city of Lincoln, so it is required to do what's called build-through to show how these lots would further subdivide after annexation by the city and change of zone, which is this layout that's in your packet on page 93. Shows the road to continue further south with a new road and a cul-de-sac, and one connection point to this lot to the east for future development over there. As I said, this cannot be done until after the city annexes it, and there's a change of zone and city water and sewer services are there. The only other thing I would point out is that these first lots would be served with individual wells for water, and they are proposing a community lagoon system for these lots. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Tom? I guess that's it. Thanks.
Advocate?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. Here today on behalf of Wayne and Laura Pester. Wayne and Laura live on that existing house on the property, and I'll put that back up to talk briefly about the layout. Both Wayne, independently of us, and then with us, worked probably, I think, about two years on this project, on going back and forth on the layout and how he wanted it to look, and we gravitated towards what I call the new build-through model, where we've got small, less than one-acre lots, rather than showing a three-acre lot with three portions of it that could be future subdivided. This is what I believe to be planning's preferred build-through model now, as it allows a much cleaner integration of the urban area, as you can see with another road and cul-de-sac when sewer and water get there, which is projected to be many decades out. But we have a plan on how to get the maximum density out of this property in terms of the goals of the comprehensive plan. So, back to this layout, though, in terms of, we wanna make sure everybody understands that's what's happening now. The eight new lots up here on Jack's Lane and Southwest 25th, and then Wayne and Laura's house would be platted to one lot by itself down there on Denton Road. So, we've had a couple calls and emails from neighbors, a couple things. One person wanted to ensure in the Cardwell Woods area that we would be doing the detention, and we will be doing detention for this property. It was a minimal increase in cubic feet per second and total runoff, but we will be doing actually two detention cells, 'cause there's two different drainage basins, one on the east side, one on the west side. We'll be doing a community sewer system, too. But, so we'll be meeting all the detention standards. The other questions have generally revolved around the roads. Apparently, Jack's Lane and Southwest 25th are not in great condition, and so we've encouraged them to talk to the county engineers. Those are existing roads. They've been platted. And then, secondly, there have been requests for us to pave the extension to Southwest 25th and also pave the other roads in the area. Well, our developer is obviously not gonna pave the other roads that have already been platted and developed, and he chose to just go with the gravel as it abuts the gravel roads today. The third remaining issue that I did wanna highlight on the build-through model was that there were several of the neighbors that wanted to, desired that there would be at this time another access out to Denton Road, but I did wanna show you that that's kind of out of our hands, if you will. You can see, even in the build-through model, we don't access Denton Road, and the reason being is that at this quarter-mile point right here, where that section corner is, that's the next preferred entry onto Denton Road to meet the new access management policies for quarter-mile access. So, we do not have access onto Denton Road for that reason in the current eight-lot build-out or even in the future. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from Mr. Eckert? Guess that's it. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of these items? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of these items? Just please come forward.
My name is Carlisle Welch. My address is 6741 Southwest 25th. I would like to speak in opposition to, not so much the fact that this area is going to, is being requested to have zoning change to agricultural residential, or that it's going to be developed at all, but I would like to point out that the area that is under discussion is actually very uniquely different in its design than the areas that surround it. I would point out that this area here, for example, is my property. As you can see, it's probably about three or more times, almost four times in some cases, the size of the lots that are anticipated here. As a matter of fact, if you go to the- As a matter of fact, if you go to the long-term plan, the lots that are anticipated, some of them are basically like a city lot. And I think that most of you are aware that all of the properties north of this area for some distance, as well as west of this area for a long distance, are all with large acreages, in the area of three acres. In the Pester Ridge development, all of the properties are just like mine. Of course, I'm here because this borders my property more than anyone else's. But what we would like to do is to maintain that type of development in that area. I really don't see this as, as if I can use the terminology, a Pester Ridge addition. I think it's a Pester Ridge subtraction. In other words, the ambiance and the type of development that we are proposing here is one of going into almost an urban type of development, and not being in correspondence with all of the areas, both north, west, and south out in this area. Even the developer himself is maintaining a nice acreage, but the people that he is asking to have developed for the rest of it are very, very small. And I think that this is an inappropriate use of this land under these circumstances. If the future turns out that they're going to subdivide lots of these places, including if I wanted to eventually sell half of my property, I suppose that's something for the future. But at the present time, if this going to be maintained as a Pester Ridge estates development, it should not allow for one acre and less per unit, and should be developed in a similar context. Increased density of, by a factor of three to four is simply out of context with what is already developed in a very large area here in the western, southwestern part of the Lincoln and the county. And I would contest the decision to make that type of arrangement. We too would wonder with the long-term arrangements why a exit, at least one additional exit. In fact, we suspect that this will be required to have one additional exit, other than just one in, in place to come in and one place to go out on 25th. That there should be, excuse me, there should be some other entrance and exit. For example, when, only a few years ago, Jack's Road did not even allow for traffic, and that was opened, much against the wishes of the people who lived there. In fact, they responded as to why they personally should pay for the upgrading of that without any consultation in advance, or allowance for input of the people in the area. We have people coming even from the area of, north of us, that walk or ride their horses or ride their bicycles, and the other morning when we had our breakfast, we could see a deer walking by. We are talking about the change of the whole ambiance of this area, and that happens when you start increasing the density of population. And I, I just don't see the justification of making this into city lots in this whole area down here. It's not befitting of the people who have paid a lot of money to be in an area similar to what we have currently, and it is certainly inconsistent with what's going on west and north and even south of us. So, that's just my comment on the arrangement. We would hope that further consideration could be made to the land use in this area. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Walsh? Tracy?
What is your area of land?
Three acres.
Three acres, okay. Thank you.
All of the units in Pester Ridge are three acres.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of this item? Do you have questions for staff? Applicant rebuttal, anything you want to say?
Yes, I just wanted to comment. I think, and I don't have a map that shows the area further south of here, but you've got Cardwell Woods, which was a community sewer system project that had smaller lots, and Forman Ridge then was closer to the two and three-acre lots. Then we ended up with a development called Cardwell Reserve, which was actually third-acre lots. And so, just on the south side of here, there is an example of how many different lot sizes in different developments have commingled and seemed to have been successful. I also just wanted to point out that we recently did two projects, one called Trinity Oaks, which did one to one and a half acre lots adjacent to three-acre lots, without any opposition, and they, they've seemed to mesh pretty well. And then Cotton Woods Estates is another one not built, but had one acre lots down on Satilla Road, and it was adjacent to acreages too. So, lastly, I just want to conclude. I think that Planning would reiterate that this is more or less the desired build-through model, and that we can plan for the future urban growth. The density is the same as what we would otherwise have. Yes, it is concentrated in one area, but as I mentioned, we worked extensively on this for a couple of years and feel this is the best thing for the developer and for the future growth of Lincoln.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you. We have two items. Jerry, you want to call them separately?
Yes, okay. This would be action on change of zone number 17014 from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at Southwest 25th Street and West Denton Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Harris.
Thank you. Discussion?
I understand your concern. I'm looking at the map, and there's a lot of, some more acreages to your size out there. But I'm hoping that this will be fine, and you'll get used to it. I know it's not what you want to hear, but I will support the application.
Anyone else?
I'm going to support the change of zone. I appreciate the testimony and appreciate your concern, but this is the, the development that's there, and the owners have pushed forward for this, and, and they're, it's, it's their right to do that, so.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay. This is for approval. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. The associated special permit 17021 for AJ Agricultural Residential District Community Unit Plan to include nine acreage lots on approximately 25.12 acres, more or less on property generally located at Southwest 25th Street and West Denton Road. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the clerk within 14 days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertained motion.
With approval.
Thank you.
Second, Edgerton.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, going on to item 1.7, County Special Permit Number 17018, for the construction of a commercial feedlot on property generally located one-half mile east of 176th Street and Firth Road. And this is, again, final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the County Board within 14 days of action. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none. Tom?
Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. I believe the commissioners, did you all get the email from the property owners at 27805 South 176th?
Yes.
In opposition with concerns to property values, odors, and runoff. This application is for a commercial feedlot for up to 90,000 chickens, and what would be four buildings on, on 20 acres. The 20 acres is within this area. The zoning would remain agriculture. This is a use allowed by special permit in the agricultural district. One of the requirements is that it has to be reviewed and approved by Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. There is a letter from NDEQ attached to the staff report. They have been out there to look at the site. There are a few conditions that appear to be very doable, and if they meet those conditions, it, I don't think NDEQ, it appears, does not have any concerns with this. Health Department also looks at the application. Their only comment was that they would need to comply with the Lancaster County Air Pollution Control. Those, other than those comments, there was no other departments had concerns with the application. Firth Road is a gravel road also, and that, that would remain gravel. I think, any, any questions concerning the operation? I'm sure the applicant can answer those.
Questions for Tom? Thank you. Advocate?
Hi. My name is Nick Heiderks. I live at 14171 Firth Road. A little bit about myself. I grew up around livestock most of my life. The last 10 years, I've been hauling and spreading manure for Sunnyside Farms, which is an egg-laying facility near Firth. So I have some knowledge about chickens and how to take care of these birds. Not jumping into this business without any knowledge of any chickens. One reason I wanted to start this project is to diversify my farming operation, to be able to have a steady income through the harder times of low and low crop prices. I plan on building four sheds that would house chicks for organic meat. The buildings will be located approximately three-fourths of a mile east of 176 and Firth Road. There's actually two hills. These are the top of the hills. That, there's an acreage development over on 176th with a pond, and there will be two hills there that will block their view of the facilities. And the, and the sheds will actually be across the east side of the property with a tree line next to it. And also, I was looking at putting trees across the front also, if, if, if I choose to do that. The front of the buildings will face the road. You can't, from the location, you can't see any house in any direction. You can see a couple, you can see a shed, and there's a church a few miles to the northwest, but other than that, there is no house in sight. I have talked to several neighbors in the area, either in person or by phone, and have had, and most of them have had experience with farming, past or present. One of the biggest concerns about this type of operation is the smell. The, with chickens, it is a very small footprint with the odor of the buildings. Another consideration is the winds typically don't come out of the southeast very often. I'd like to point out that there are several broiler barns and egg-laying buildings in the area that are very near towns such as Sunnyside Farms, which is an egg-laying farm approximately one mile to the southeast of Firth with over 800,000 laying hens. There's a housing development just across the road also. There's another broiler farm just south of Waverly, a half-mile, with over 100,000 chicks. Also, Smart Chickens Original Farm is located just a few miles north of Tecumseh with over 30 sheds, totaling over 500,000 chickens on that site. For the, for my personal farm, it'll have ventilation across, there'll be some main ventilation across the front, but most of the ventilation in the summertime will happen out the back of the building, so it'll be quite a ways, distance off the road, and there shouldn't be any smell from that, or note, or noise. I heard that there was a concern about the noise of the fans. The, the birds stay in there six weeks, and so they come in as day-old chicks and stay for six weeks. At that time, they're removed for processing, and then they'll be empty for two weeks to rotate the bedding of the woodchips and manure, disinfect the sheds, and prepare them for the new, the next flock. This happens five times a year before the compost is removed from the farm and spread around farm ground for use, uses fertilizer. So the manure will only be taken out of the house once per year and hauled away. I'm planning on loading the compost directly onto trucks and removing it as soon as it comes out of the building. The manure will cover approximately 150 to 200 acres a year. I currently farm enough ground that I can put that on my own farm ground, and since I've been doing Sunnyside's manure, I know that there is a strong market in the area for the manure, so there wouldn't be a problem getting rid of it. Another concern people could have is the environmental product, impact. The building will be surrounded by grass to prevent any runoff of any residue other than rainwater. The grass will be maintained and well-kept. Since the buildings are for organic chickens, they'll have access to a fenced-in area outside between the buildings during the day, weather permitting. As far as the water is used for this farm, it only needs one residential well with a backup well just for protection of the chicks if the first well were happened to fail due to mechanical error. And I have talked with the Department of Environmental Quality, met them out there, and, and will meet their conditions. Overall, I'd like to just take this opportunity to get this farm up and running, give my younger family a leg up in the farming industry too, that is slowly becoming an older generation harder to make a living at. The farm isn't just for me and my wife Jen, it is also for our kids, two of which have been waiting patiently to see us.
If you could finish up, please. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
So I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. You're going to store all of the waste from the chickens in your four?
Yeah, it stays underneath the birds, and you just rotate it, and then they can use that heat to keep them warm.
And then you're just taking that out once?
Once a year.
Does that create any fire hazard?
No. There's foundation walls across the side, so there's cement.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Skillet. I'm at 5225 South 16th Street. I'm the Livestock Development Coordinator for AFAN, the Alliance for the Future of Agriculture in Nebraska. I've got some pieces here I want to share with you guys, so I've got some handouts. Sorry. There should be 10 of them, so there should be plenty to go around. Unless I cut myself short. Oh, here's some extras.
Thank you.
The first thing I'd like to mention is that thank you for patiently waiting for us. It's been a couple of hours. So, first of all, I'd like to show you some studies that have been done recently by the University of Georgia. We heard some concerns, maybe we will hear some concerns from neighbors about odor, property values, those kinds of things, so I'd like to talk about those very quickly. This is a study from the University of Georgia, who if anybody knows anything about the livestock industry, is the number-one state for poultry in the country. And so this study was done by the university, and what they did is they measured ammonia levels that came out of the houses. These chicken houses were measured for four weeks, and what they did is they used lasers and smoke to see how far the ammonia would travel. And what they found out is, they used the hot summer, humid weather of Georgia, as well as full-size market birds, and what they found out, and I'm going to run like a whole bunch of numbers at you guys, so don't, if you have questions later, I can totally ask them. And what they found out is they measured at 100, 300, and 500 feet, and what they found out was the quote-unquote ammonia concentrations decreased by 50% between 100 and 500 feet. And then after that, And then after that, um, they were found to be less than one part per million ninety-four percent of the time, any farther than that. And what that, um, what's important to know about those numbers is that the EPA's odor detection levels for ammonia are noted to be concentrated between five and five fifty, excuse me, fifty parts per million. And they found that the ammonia levels were never detected higher than three parts per million, um, farther than five hundred feet from the house. Again, we're going really quick, because I know I've got a time limit. The second piece you'll see is an odor footprint tool, which is designed by the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. It's your second piece of paper. And what they found out, and we ran the, the numbers with the four poultry houses with twenty-two thousand birds in each barn, with the, the flooring of litter, and used the weather data from Beatrice, Nebraska. And we found if you highlight, if you look at the highlighted ones, that's the quote-unquote quarter-mile mark, that ninety-six percent of the time from the north, you would not have an odor at a quarter mile. At ninety-eight percent, it would be to the east, south, and pretty much the west, ninety-eight percent of the time into quarter mile. So what it means is that approximately quarter mile away from the proposed site, the expected detectable odor would not be projected to exceed one hour a day over the course of the month. And then if you want to see, um, there is weather data about four pages in for Beatrice as well as Lincoln. Um, and that shows the prevailing winds through March, July, and November. So you can kind of see the directions that those winds would be going in. Finally, we've got a piece, um, did I hand it out to you? No, I did not. There should be a thick piece of, there we go. These are property values, yes. These are property values from around the thirty barn, um, facility in Tecumseh. And they're, like I said, we've heard some concerns about property values decreasing because of livestock in the area. Um, as you will know, on that packet, I only had one, because I figured that was a lot of paper. Um, you will see an increase in all those property values. Not only are is the thirty chicken houses there, but it's also got the prison and the airport nearby as well, so I would like to note that. Um, finally, like I said, agriculture is the number-one industry in the state of Nebraska, one in four jobs is related to that. And we see a huge, about one point one billion dollars' worth of, um, tax base that comes in from income tax from, from the livestock facilities. So I just want you guys to remain vigilant in the fact that this is an ag-zoned area. Um, I'd like to see livestock continue to grow in that area. Um, I know that there are housing developments nearby, but again, these are, this is ag-zoned county, and I think that that's a great use of land, so, thank you.
Questions?
Again, sorry, I went through those numbers really fast.
So your report essentially says that within one quarter of a mi- or?
A quarter of a mile.
Quarter of a mile.
Your odor should be very minimal.
One hour per month?
Hour of the month, yeah.
Okay.
Per month.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item?
Good afternoon, my name is Nathan Dorn, D-O-R-N. I live at four three eight eight South Sixty-eighth Road in Firth, Nebraska. Um, I'd like to testify in support. Thank you for hearing us today. Nick Heat Dirks is my brother-in-law, and he's a very good man. He does a very good job of taking care of what is his. You drive by his place, and there's never a, never a board that's out of place. There's never a piece of grass that should be mowed that isn't. If he says he's gonna maintain this, he will do just that. I serve as a director, the, the secretary of the Nebraska Soybean Association. And we're, we're promoting and soybean agriculture throughout the state. And this is something where chickens eat a lot of soybeans. So, uh, if you, if you've watched crop prices in the last year, crop prices aren't what they've been in the last five years. And so any animal agriculture that would, um, come to our state and would eat our soybeans and our corn is much beneficial to, uh, the producers in this coun- in this county. Um, also, I'm a director for the Lancaster Farm Bureau Board, and I've been authorized to say that the Farm Bureau is behind this a hundred percent. We talked about this at our last meeting, and we were actually lamenting the, the amount of animal agriculture that's in our county. Obviously, we have the, the capital, the flagship city in our state, and so it's very difficult for animal agriculture to be spread around that. But this, being in the far southeast corner of the county, is, should be far enough away from anybody and far enough away, far enough away from, um, far enough away from the population center that this would be a very good, good statement to make that Lancaster County is, is not necessarily a bad place for agriculture. With that, I have any, I would answer any questions you would have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support?
My name is Gary Heat Dirks. I live at two eight one eight zero one hundred and seventy-sixth. Nick is my son. I am, of course, in support of it. I, the farm they're talking about, Sunnyside Farm, I was the president of that farm for sixteen years. We'd had more than twenty houses built within a half mile to a mile. Never had one complaint, except one time, they had feathers in their front yard off the truck. I think that says a lot. And it's a little disheartening. Some of the people opposed have never approached any of us. I live on the place where the building's gonna be. And some things that have not been talked about is, we're gonna need some help. And some of these people that are opposing it, maybe their kid, kids could come and help out. We don't know. We, we'll hire kids. So, that's all I got.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Mark Hunsaker. I'm appearing on behalf of Matt and Elaine Cranford, Jim and Jill Small, and Jason Culver, all who, all of whom reside in the area or own lots in the Fisherman Lan- Fisherman's Landing Development, which is a lakeside development about three-quarters of a mile from the site. The Smalls recently completed a home. Cranfords own a lot and intend to build on the property. And Culver's, Culver's also recently completed construction of a new home in the area. It's a little bit surprising to see, to hear the suggestion that there should have been some effort made by these people to contact the applicant, to, uh, reach out, so to speak. There has been no neighborhood meeting, there has been no opportunity to ask questions of either the applicant or the staff. And for people who travel extensively in their work, insufficient notice to gain access to information about potential impacts on their homes. Uh, among the concerns include truck traffic. Uh, there's very little indication of how much truck traffic there will be on the gravel roads in the area other than a statement in the staff report that there would be an average of one semi per day, with no indication of what the peaks might look like, or, or what the impact on the roads might be. There's no indication that the plan's been reviewed by the county engineer regarding impact of trucks on the road. No indication of review, uh, of the site plan for the ability of trucks to enter and circulate within the site plan and, and exit back onto the gravel road. No indication of a review of the site plan for a dedication of right-of-way, which is pretty standard in virtually every special permit in the county. As to runoff, uh, there's, there's no real plan submitted with respect to runoff. Uh, nothing, nothing as part of your application. I mean, the application consists of a letter and this handwritten or hand-drawn site plan, and that's it. There's no contours, there's no indication of where the site drains, there's no indication of where there might be detention to keep, uh, the effluent out of the quote waters of the state, as the, as the NDEQ letter states. Uh, there's no indication of what sort of vegetation is to be planted, much less maintained on the site. And, um, and no, no indication of where. I mean, we heard just now that there's an intention to stockpile the waste inside the buildings, uh, but there is no condition that requires that in your staff report. There is a, a further concern that we're really surprised did not show up in the staff report. This is the, um, the county line, one hundred and ninetieth Street. This is the site where the chicken farm is proposed. This site down here represents four rural water district well sites. For rural water district number one, for Bennett. Uh, there's no indication that that's been taken into account. There's nothing in the staff report that refers to even acknowledging that those well sites exist, and no indication that the rural water district is comfortable with the location of this facility that close to their wells. Now, you know, the city of Lincoln has recently made news about concern over the chicken farm near Fremont as to its potential impact on our wells near Ashland. That's quite a ways. This is like a half a mile or less from the wells of the rural water district. You know, believe what you want about the smell, there is concern about that. And until this minute, we have not heard or seen any information on that subject. And in fact, we still haven't seen that ourselves. It's been distributed to you. We would suggest to you that it's appropriate for you to defer action on this until this applicant can at least schedule a meeting that will, uh, address these concerns and, and, and revise this application and the staff report to reflect conditions of approval that will guarantee that these things are, are complied with. Because there is nothing in this staff report that would give the county anything to go forward with on an enforcement action of a violation of anything to do with this permit. It would all have to run through the state NDEQ the way this is drafted, which strikes me as a kind of abdication of responsibility. I'd try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Hunsaker?
Are your plants across the road and to the west?
They're, they're just off of one hundred and seventy-sixth Street, which is about three-quarters of a mile as the crow flies.
I actually drove out there to look at the site, so.
Yeah, they're on the, they're on the lake, if you want. Oh, thank you. Tom just gave me a, uh, if this was helpful to you. The lake is here off of one hundred and seventy-sixth Street. The site is right here.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition?
Good afternoon, my name's James Small. Excuse me, I live on twenty-seven six zero one Broadwater Bay, about three-quarters of a mile to the northwest of the proposed development. I'm born and raised in the middle of Nebraska on a family farm. I understand that agriculture is the foundation that built the state of Nebraska. I'm not against farmers, I'm not against diversifying farmers. Like they all said, the applicant said, we have, you know, chicken farms, livestock feedlots, dairies all around our area. When's enough gonna be enough? We kind of picked this place, my wife and I, saved up our money and did everything we could. And we did everything right to provide a great piece of land, beautiful views, everything we wanted, and so we could have our kids play outside whenever they'd like. And so, with that being said, we built it not knowing that there was gonna be a chicken farm down the road. The people at Sunnyside, they built, a lot of them built, knowing the chicken farm was there. So, to say that their property values went up, but can you guarantee me, if you vote yes on this, that my property values won't go down? Can you guarantee me I'll never smell it? Can you guarantee me the water will never be contaminated? That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition?
I am Matt Cranford. I live at twenty-five thirty-six Woodsdale Boulevard here in Lincoln. I don't have much to add. I mean, between Mark and, uh, James, they kind of echo my sentiment. My wife and I bought a lot down there on the lake about two years ago with the intent to build a home. The, the seller had subdivided this fifty-eight acre, uh, NRD lake into eleven lots, sizable lots. The homes, there's, uh, three homes built on it right now, and there's a, a fourth one underway. They're very nice homes. You know, I don't, just concerned about the impacts of a chicken farm of that size, that close to where we are. And there's other homes in the area. You know, I know that a couple people have rode in with their similar concerns. And we just, like Mark said, we'd like a little more time to look into it. As far as being contacted, I was never, I mean, we got a letter, we got the notification. It was just last week we found out about this, we didn't have much time to think about it. You know, Nick never reached out to me. I never heard from him, so I'm not sure how it's my responsibility to reach out to him and my responsibility to do the research on the potential impacts of his, uh, proposed farm. That's all I got. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition? Do we have questions for staff?
What, uh, what about the water wells for Bennett? What can you tell us?
It, the application was, was not sent to that rural water district. I'm not sure if they would have been within the, I think they would have been within the mile to get notified. Not sure if they got a letter. So I guess I don't really have an answer to that, other than I would suspect that that's something that NDEQ would look at.
Would there be a site plan for the runoff and things like that?
No, um, special permit in the zoning code is pretty, pretty generic. It just says a commercial feedlot, uh, needs a special permit. And the only condition that's in the zoning code is says a statement from NDEQ whether or not they need anti-pollution controls. On a site that's agriculture and over, and twenty acres, a grading and drainage plan is not required. Detention would not be required per, per zoning. So, um, truck traffic was mentioned. I did contact the county engineer's office, and the county engineer was, did review this application and had, had no, no comment on it, really no concerns. I did ask him about the, the road, and, and county engineer's office just said that it would remain gravel as it is today. He did mention that there was a traffic study done in, uh, count done in two thousand sixteen, and it had, uh, two hundred and seven cars per day. For the increased traffic, like, um, I asked the applicant that, and, uh, the applicant was, said one semi truck per day on average. Might be able to elaborate on that some more.
I have a, a concern about the water in Bennett. You know, I would hate to start a fight. I would rather see us make sure that Bennett is aware that the chicken farm's gonna be there.
Uh, I was able to verify that we did notify the rural water district number one.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Tom? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
I also looked at my phone, I had an email from the Bennett Rural Water District, and he told me that they received the letter about the permit and they didn't have any concerns. The map of where, I can put the map back up there. The, uh, there's the top of the hill. Just a second. There's the top of the hill here. So this is in a, a lower valley. But the, but the runoff only runs from about, the top of the next hill is about here. So there's only this much water running past this location.
There's a tile drain here that DEQ wanted me to remove so that there wasn't any runoff from the farms directly into a tile, which would run into the grass onto the, into that watershed. Also, the DEQ wanted grass, a thirty-foot buffer strip behind the building so that anything that runs off will have a buffer strip to have to pass before reaching the waters. Also, the rural water district locations are up on another hill across the section. I'd also like to make a point that the, Mark, the guy that is first spoken opposition, represents only three of the eight acres, acreages that are on that Fisherman's Landing homeowners association, two of which spoke here in opposition. I know of multiple people, multiple people in the area that are even here today that are in support of it and just don't have a problem with it being there. And the peak times for the semi trucks would only be when the chicks are removed from the building. That's when the most traffic there will be. When they come in, they're only day old, so they don't need semis. And the only other time there's semis is for feed, which is roughly, I mean, it's less than a truck a day. So the most traffic for the will be every six weeks when the birds leave.
And how many vehicles would that be, or how many semis would that be?
I'm unsure. I know that with Sunnyside, they hauled ten thousand birds at a time.
And how many trucks is that?
One truck.
One truck?
Yeah, for ten thousand birds. And the, they, the company I'm looking at doing business with runs two buildings at a time. So they don't all leave at the same time. They, they're on separate intervals.
I know nothing about chicken farms, but how much waste does a chicken produce a day?
I don't know how much a day, but they produce a bushel a year per chicken. That's for layer chickens. These chickens are only day old to six weeks old, so they produce a lot less than that. That's why it only needs to be removed once a year.
Any other questions? Anything else you'd like to add? Nope? Thank you.
Question for staff?
Oh.
If Tom.
Tom, can you come back up?
I just want to verify something. So I think, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure. So the conditions that are outlined in the NDEQ letter, there's no reason for those to be reiterated in the city staff analysis report, right? Because they're not. But if they're in the NDEQ, they stand.
Because, I mean, regardless if we approve this, the city approves this, the county, NDEQ still has to approve it.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just wanted to verify that.
Tom, can you also remind us, because I'm not seeing it in the staff report about the right to farm ruling?
What I know about that is just that if you move out to an agriculture area, to the farm, and move out, you can't, you, the farmer is protected against nuisance lawsuits. Like you can't move out there and then sue the farmer for odors or that type of thing.
Okay, anything else for Tom? Thank you. Applicant, anything else you'd like to share? Okay. And entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Core.
Discussion. Anyone?
I'm gonna support the motion. I appreciate the testimony from the neighbors around there. The information that we have shows that it's, there won't be the runoff issues. The Bennett well sites will be okay. Obviously, there's no guarantees in life, but hopefully that the issues with the smell and things like that will not be an issue.
But I just want to add one thing. When we review the applications that come before us, this ongoing conflict in our county between rural and urban uses and issues always grind against each other. And a lot of times, the conflict is the same but directed opposite to us. This time, it's just interesting that it's kind of flipped, but it's the same issue. And it's that conflict that's not gonna go in our, go away in our county. I'm gonna support the motion too. I agree with a lot of what Chris said, and I think this is a good and honest use or honest application of the land here, use of the land, so I'm gonna support it.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for conditional approval. Again, this is final action by the planning commission unless appealed within the next fourteen days to the county board. Okay, Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item is item one point nine, county special permit number one seven zero two zero for an A.G. agricultural district community unit plan to cluster six residential units on ninety-six acres, more or less, on property generally located at South Ninety-sixth Street and Martell Road. This is final action by the planning commission unless appealed to the county board within fourteen days of today's action. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this matter?
I see none. Tom?
Another community unit plan with agriculture zoning out at Ninety-sixth and Martell Road. Wagon train lake is right here, next a little bit to the east of it. This is a proposal for six lots on ninety-six acres. The water, this would be served by rural water, and each lot would have a septic system on it. Here is the lot layout where we have a new road coming in on a cul-de-sac and lots on each side of it with the state property over here, wildlife management area. The main reason why staff put this off at consent was to add a condition. There is a state statute that says you cannot discharge a rifle within six hundred feet of an occupied dwelling. This, zoom in here. This lot four, the entire lot from this boundary to the boundary of the state wildlife area is within that six hundred feet. So although it's, that buffer is not a requirement of the special permit, working with game and parks, if we were to impose that six hundred feet, this entire lot four would be, would be gone. Working with game and parks and with the applicant, we were able to work out a compromise where from the eastern boundary of the CUP, they will put, have a four hundred foot buffer where no residential house can be allowed. That will leave enough room on the west side of lot four, ample space for a house to be built there. The applicant can still keep their lot. The game and parks would still have a, would have to have a two hundred foot buffer as cordoned off for no hunting with rifles. It still would be allowed to be, they could still hunt in that area if they used a bow. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Tom? Thank you. Applicant?
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group appearing on behalf of Cedarwoods LLC, Cedarwoods Estates LLC. There are two gentlemen that have brought this property and are actually gonna live out here. Don Stoner's one of them who will come up and speak in a little bit. Real quickly to talk about, we did have a very proactive approach with game and parks. And from their initial desire, we ended up with a layout that I think was more suitable. And the issue is, oddly enough, in the AGR zoning, there's a condition that says that you have to be setback six hundred foot from parks or recreational areas that allow shooting. But it doesn't exist in the A.G. zoning, and this is a straight A.G. CUP. So to cut to the chase, if you will, given our time here today, this map might help you out a little bit more in terms of the distance from really the one lot to the game and parks area. This land's owned by the United States, this is owned by the state of Nebraska. It's all the game and parks recreation area. So what we've worked out, and I think it's a very good compromise, is the green would be the six hundred foot setback. The yellow is the four hundred. So what we'll do on lot four is there'll be a residential setback where this yellow line is. And we feel the premium spot for the house is right here. And so our client's fine with that. And we can still do outbuildings in this area, but the residents would be limited. So in all reality, I feel like the house will be closer to the six hundred foot area. And then I did want to just show you another area real fast, because this is somewhat of a unique property and it's got a ton of trees. And the remaining area in the lighter color here was CRP ground. And as you know, we do a lot of acreage projects, and this one is certainly a gem. And we have tried to preserve as much of the tree masses as possible. And so for our sixth lot, that was really the best location. So, and Don's gonna come up, speak real briefly. These guys are big advocates, they're big hunters, and they're big advocates for game and parks. And so we've tried to do everything we could to accommodate their request, and I think this layout's a good one. And we agreed to the four hundred setback rule that Tom kind of had worked out. So I'll let Don come up, and then I'll come back if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you all for letting us come here today and speak a little bit. Don Stoner and live at one seventy-three hundred South Seventy-first Street, just a mile north of Hickman on an acreage. So this is a mile down the road. Just a little bit of history if I can. I've been on this property for about seventeen years and actually was on the property next to it for five until I got permission to be on this property. It came up for sale this last fall, and Kirk, a friend of mine for twenty-five years, had the idea of, you know, creating an acreage that you're looking at, acreage lots that you're looking at here. And so one of the things that we just want you all to know is our desire with this property is to be a good steward of the property. It's beautiful property. And I've spent many sunrises and sunsets myself and with my family on this property. And so our desire in getting together was to preserve this in its natural state. And so the north woods that is mentioned is about seventy acres of woods that we're not gonna do anything with. We're gonna leave that in its natural state. And so we did obviously realize that it was next to wagon train. And so one of the first things we did was go to game and parks. And I haven't met Pat yet, I'll get to meet you today here after we're done. But a couple of Pat's staff people would be Frank Albrecht and Jeff Hoffman. And we sat down at the table with them with this plan. And we also knew that we weren't required because of the ag, as Mike mentioned, the ag status. But when we mentioned that to Jeff and to Frank, they brought up, you know, the facts of the property and the setbacks and that. And so these two lots, they're premium. The view from that lot and pushing through those trees with that cul-de-sac on the original plan, it's a beautiful spot. And so, but after we talked with them, Kirk and I went back and thought, what can we do? And then we met with Mike to bring that back and to shrink that down so that, so that we could be more accommodating in that way. And so Mike redrew that. And frankly, some in this room might think we're crazy, because we could have taken that road straight up into the woods and develop lots for that. Game and Parks looked at this property for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars at one point and didn't purchase the lot, the land. We purchased it for four hundred and ninety thousand. We could double that if we went up into those woods, but we chose not to do that. So we're taking less money, and we're glad for that. So when we met then with Mike and redrew that, you know, we still kept our original intentions and have those today. We have grandchildren, you know, we're gonna, this, we'll be on this, we'll turn this over generationally is what our plan is. And so along with game and parks, which we very much support, this property will stay intact that way for years and years to come. And we're glad to be able to do that. And so anyway, another point that I'd like to make on that, as I looked at that, is this map that you'll have, page one thirty-eight, I believe it is. And Mike spoke to that a bit already. But there's four to five homes in this corner that are, would be less than six hundred feet, maybe even four hundred because of the property across the road. And so there's people in that area that live in there. Again, we took ours as far west as we could to, with all those pieces in mind, and want to do that. So we're excited about it. We want to preserve it, and that's what our intentions are, to do that. But we'd really like to sell that lot to the east side. It's beautiful. And taking into account the things at hand, but we don't want to be restricted to the point of not being able to sell that well. And so anyway, that's, we have a market plan. It's gonna be Cedarwoods Estate. We'll have a website that actually will promote game and parks in regard to the location and use of that land as well nearby. It's a great location for that. So anyway, any questions that you all would have on our due process that we've been trying to take?
Questions for Mr. Stoner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item?
Pat Mulaney in Nebraska Game and Parks, twenty-two hundred North Thirty-third. I originally intended to oppose it, but since there's been an amendment, that'll change. And some of my comments may not be relevant anymore, but I'm gonna have to read them. So my name's Pat Mulaney, and Jeff Hoffman is retired. I took his position, so that's kind of what happened. And I'm new to his position by a week, so I wasn't aware of the prior conversations. But, and I appreciate the work that was done the last two days, because I was out of the state. And so I am the assistant division administrator for the Game and Parks Wildlife Division. The section I work in is responsible for public wildlife land management, which includes lands that are open to hunting. This includes the wildlife management area adjacent to the east of this proposed residential development in permit number seventeen oh two oh. The Game and Parks would like to add comments on this special permit. And originally, I wanted to point out Article thirteen, which they pointed out is not, is not relevant, but still a lot of things apply. And so in Article thirteen of the Lancaster County zoning regulation, it talks about restrictions. And one of the main restrictions is thirteen point zero one two. All dwellings, occupied buildings, livestock feedlots shall be located a minimum of six hundred feet or two hundred yards from the property line for public, of the public lake property. State statute does prohibit hunting within two hundred yards of inhabited dwellings and livestock feedlots with a rifle and within one hundred yards with all other weapons. So the Game and Parks manages this land using grants and revenues derived from the sale of licenses and habitat stamps, which are required by hunters and trappers to purchase. And revenue from these hunters and trappers, anglers, also pays for the purchase of this land, along with the management. So in a state like Nebraska with only a small fraction of public land allowed for public hunting, the additional loss of even small amounts of land can affect many. Commission believes, and I'm talking about Article thirteen, like I said, I was out of the state and wasn't able to edit this very well. So the commission believes that Article thirteen and its contents are set in place by the Lancaster County Commissioners as recognition of the importance of many outdoor enthusiasts in Lancaster County and the protection that is warranted around these public recreation areas. Outdoor enthusiasts, including hunters, anglers, trappers, hikers, bird watchers, put millions of dollars into the Nebraska's economy every year, as well. as well as provide important wildlife population control. If a setback is not required on this and future development, residential developments, there are many acres that are currently open to hunting that could potentially be closed to hunting. Many people hunt just to get outdoors or spend time with family and friends. But one species that is critical for us to have hunted in order to help manage populations and the damage that they cause is the whitetail deer. So deer are highly prolific and can overpopulate quickly. And the Commission relies on hunters to help control the deer herd and that damage they can cause. So yeah, upon my original letter and intentions to oppose, we've worked out an agreement. The Commission agrees to this compromise of setting all dwellings back on this development 400 feet from the property line. Again, however, I use this opportunity to point out to you the long-term importance of sustaining the integrity of these state lake areas. Many Lancaster County users spend many, many hours using them. Excuse me. Any development too close to the boundaries can make it more difficult to provide the same level of recreation as well as perform management responsibilities such as wildlife population control. Setbacks will also help protect our neighbors from potential conflict with users of these areas, of this area. The Gamin Parks respectfully submits this request. I thank you for your opportunity, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do you have any other questions for staff? Any other rebuttal you have?
Yes, I just wanted to come up and say we appreciate Pat being here. And as Don mentioned, I think the important item here too is that they are going to be notifying all these buyers that they're within a certain distance to the state park that allows the shooting to happen. And so I don't think there'll be any complaints long-term. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, as you've seen, this is a great example of how clustering and the clustering provision in the special permit is great because these guys could go divide this into twenties today, 20-acre parcels, and they could put houses right up there against basically the park property line. So working together, I think we've got a great project here, and we ask for your support.
Thank you. And entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Do you mean as amended by the staff report?
Yes.
As amended.
The staff report was revised.
Yeah.
As for the revised staff report, yeah.
Move approval with condition 1.15.
Thank you. You accept that? Great. Discussion?
I love it when everybody gets along. Everything can't be this easily worked out.
I just want to thank the, you know, the owners of the property for working with Gamin Parks and making kind of that last-minute change. Like Maya says, it's great when we can all work things out.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for County Special Permit Number 17020. Staff recommendation, this conditional approval per the revised staff report. Okay, Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item is, I'll get back here in a minute. Item 4.1, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 17004 to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the future land use map priority growth, area designations, and future service limit on land generally located at South 70th Street and South 84th Streets and Saltillo and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on this agenda item?
I see none. Andrew?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. So the area we're talking about is shown on the screen now. Here is 70th, Saltillo, 84th is just, just to the east here. This amendment would have three elements, a future service limit change, the growth tier map change, and then a future land use map change. So I'll just walk through each one quickly for us. So here's the area we're looking at. Right now, the future service limit is right here. Areas within the future service limit would be provided urban services by 2040. Areas outside of the future service limit would not be anticipated to have urban services. With this application, the applicant provided an engineering study and conceptual layout showing that this area can be served by urban services. Most importantly is the gravity flow sewer. So it would be appropriate to amend the future service limit. Somewhat tied to that is the growth tiers. You can see the area just to the north is Tier One Priority B, which would be development within the first half of the planning period, so 2025, 2026. Right now, this site is in Tier Three, which would be 50 years or more. It's reserved for long, long-term growth. But since the applicant has demonstrated that this area can be provided with urban services, it would be appropriate to move this area into Tier One Priority B with anticipated development within the next roughly 10 or so years. The final piece is the future land use map changes. So right now, the site shown is agricultural because it's in Tier Three. But since it would be within the future service limit, it would be appropriate to give it future urban uses. So we're showing, let's see, 80 acres of future residential. And then on the south piece along Saltillo, about 12 acres of commercial land use. This commercial area is due to a pipeline in Saltillo. So the area within the pipeline planning area would be commercial. Do we have any questions?
Questions?
Andrew, can you go over just a little bit or explain why, I mean, I know the answer, but I just want you to get it on the record, why you're jumping Tier Two altogether and going all the way to Tier One with the priority?
Because it is developable within, well, Tier One Priority B would be within 2025, 2026. Utilities would be available. Tier Two is after 2040.
So it's really just having to do with the timeframe that's pushing it up to the Tier One instead of landing in Tier Two?
Yep. And really, I mean, the biggest factor is that gravity sewer is available here that can just flow north.
Anyone else?
Just one question about the fire rescue. So just to understand correctly, is it, is it outside of the desired response time even when there's not a flood?
Well, we're not, so today, we're not annexing it or doing even a change of zone or anything with it. So I guess based on our existing fire station situation, I'm not sure about the answer to that. So this isn't approving any development plan or anything for the site. It's just the idea of, per our comp plan, it could be provided with urban services appears to be within the next 10 years or so. So at that time, the situation may be a little different with fire too in terms of locations and everything.
And any development would come forward and we?
Yes.
We could talk about that and how, exactly how?
Yes, there's?
Delay could be if there's a bad flood.
Yeah, there's still more approvals to come. I mean, there would be a preliminary plat or CUP or something in the future that would still have to be approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group appearing on behalf of the O'Brien family. I think Andrew did a good job, and I might just spring forward to your two questions because I think they are probably the two most relevant. How did we jump so far? And is there any flood impact on this property? I do have this exhibit that shows, I think Tracy will help you to see the area we are at here. So this is 70th, this is 84th, this is Roca B Road here, and this is Saltillo down here. And so up, if you extend up 84th, that's where the new YMCA and middle school is at. And so this area out here, south of that school, south of Jensen Park, down to about this area right here. And then if you come across the half-mile line and come up to here, it was all part of the land that was in the Roca B Coalition. A small amount of this was in the natural Bill Slue Drainage Basin. And we figured out how to get the sewer done, built deep enough with the street that's going to be happening next year. And this was back in 2007, though, that we figured out how to sewer this area. At that time, we ran some preliminary profiles that showed that we felt like the area that we could serve probably generally ended at about that half-mile line and didn't take our analysis too much further. The O'Brien family and some other people down there didn't seem interested at that time in, in looking at if their land could sewer. And so at the request here, over the last several months, we did figure out that if this sewer line right here, there's a big city trunk line right here. This sewer line right there, coming through that development, could be upsized a few inches and allow this area here to be sewered with reasonable grading. And so that this area here that otherwise Tracy was, actually would flow to Hickman. And so we'd have to have sewer go clear down to Hickman and then wrap back up in order to serve that area. So that's why the big jump. In that now, we can get it to flow into this sewer line, which will actually be constructed next year. And so that was the reason for the big jump. In terms of any floodplain issues with this particular parcel, we're in very good shape. The watershed master plan that we just recently brought through you guys and went to council a couple of weeks ago was done for this entire drainage basin that drains towards Wagon Train Lake. And in the process of doing that, even though our coalition property at that time ended here, city watershed staff had requested that we model it clear down to Saltillo. So we've got a full up-to-date model of the floodplain here as it goes to Saltillo. And the good news is when the sewer line is constructed, and the road is actually constructed here too, there will be a triple box culvert put in here. So it'll pass the 100-year. The 100-year, I do not know for sure. I suspect as it's built today would overtop Saltillo Road. But we have a, we have a floodproof route, floodproof route on 84th, 70th, and Roca B for emergency services to get into the development. And one of the newly planned fire stations is up at 66th and Pine Lake Road. So just over about two miles away in terms of coverage area. And that will be built, I'm confident, before this area develops, so. Those are a couple of the issues of how we got to this point, but we've got full staff support. It's a very efficient development for the city. With the Roca B Coalition, sewer and water mains were already planned. 70th, 84th, and Saltillo are already paved to county standards. So we can build up some impact fees to eventually expand those facilities. But in terms of infrastructure, extremely efficient project, so we ask for your approval.
Questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition? Do we have questions for staff? Anything else you'd like to add? I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just say it's a little bit unusual to do, make a change from Tier Three to One, but the burden has been on the applicant to, to show that this can be done without any negative impact. And they've done so to the satisfaction of all agencies involved. So the comp plan is a guide, not a static rulebook. So I appreciate we can have the flexibility to make these changes when they make sense.
I'd agree with Maya. I think at this point, there's a shortage of lots in the city, and hopefully this will help alleviate that in a small amount. So Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for the approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 17004. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, prior to calling the next items, Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on Items 4.2A through 4.2E. Okay, first item is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 17006 to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by revising the boundaries of the future land use, plan residential, green space, and environmental resources designation areas, expanding the future service limit and changing the future growth tier designation from Tier Two and Tier One Priority B to Tier One Priority A on property generally located at southwest and southeast of South 27th Street and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for approval. Item 4.2B is annexation number 17005 to annex approximately 28, or I'm sorry, 218.67 acres more or less on property generally located southwest and southeast of South 27th Street and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Item 4.2C is change of zone number 17012 from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential on property generally located southwest of 27th Street and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Item 4.2D is change of zone number 17013 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District. Plan unit development for up to 450 dwelling units and up to 50,000 square feet of commercial floor area on property generally located at the southeast corner of South 27th Street and Roca B Road. I would note that there is a revised staff report that has been submitted. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. And the final item associated with these is Item 4.2E, Special Permit Number 17017 to allow for the development of a community unit plan with up to 79 single-family dwelling units with the waiver to allow double-frontage lots on property generally located at southwest, located southwest of South 27th Street and Roca B Road. Again, there's a revised staff report that's been submitted. And staff recommendation is for conditional approval. This is final action on this special permit unless appealed to the clerk within 14 days. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on these agenda items?
I see none.
Rachel Jones, Planning Staff. These five applications all relate to two proposed new developments at 27th and Roca B. This is the application area here, 27th Street, and then Roca B Road. And it would be for a new community unit plan on the west side of 27th Street and a new planned unit development for the east side of 27th. And so the boundary that's shown there is the boundary for the annexation. And I'll get into the CUP first. So this is the boundary of the CUP. Most of this area is in the floodplain and covered under a conservation easement. So the actual area that would be developed would just be here along Roca B and then some here along 27th Street. And so this is the change of zone boundary that shows what those areas would be. And then here's their proposed site plan. They are requesting approval of up to 79 units, but they're showing 45 on their, on their site plan currently. The 79 units would be the maximum permitted density for the CUP. And so eight of the lots would front onto Roca B. There'd be a number of lots down here that would have access off of 27th Street and then some lots that would be continued as a cul-de-sac on the east side here. And then I'll get into the PUD next. Again, this is on the east side of 27th Street. And they are requesting approval of up to 250 dwelling units. This is the site plan. So the majority of the area would be single-family units. Again, a lot of this area is covered under floodplain and conservation easement. And the boundary of the conservation easement and floodplain is going to be slightly revised as part- as part of this. And then up on the northeast corner by the intersection is a proposed future commercial slash residential area. Right now, they don't have a specific plan for that area, so it's just shown conceptually for future commercial slash residential, possibly some type of mixed use. There is an annexation agreement that goes along with these applications to address improvements to 27th Street and Roca B Road. And so Roca B Road, west of 27th Street, is paved and built. Roca B Road, east of 27th Street, is gravel, and that would be paved as a two-lane road, a temporary road to be widened and built to full standard sometime in the future by the city. 27th Street is a two-lane paved road currently. They'd be constructing turn lanes at all the intersections, all the entrances to the PUD and CUP developments. So this is a map showing the floodplain in this area. There are two road crossings of the floodplain that are important. There's one here on 27th Street and then one here on Roca B. And those crossings would not be fully improved and raised up out of the floodplain as part of this. They would just remain basically as they are. On Roca B, there'd be really minimal grading. So during flood events, it's possible that those crossings could be overtopped. And Lincoln Fire and Rescue did note that these applications are outside their preferred response time. In theory, if the crossings were overtopped due to flooding, it could restrict access in and out of the development during that time. And the city will be adding signage to alert the public of this crossing as part of this. The, so along 40th Street, you can see there's also another floodplain crossing. Actually, there's two crossings. And then further north, there's an additional one. They will be contributing, making a $1 million payment towards improving these two crossings here. The reason being that we expect in the future, most development's going to be concentrated along 40th Street. And so moving up the 40th Street improvements will help to ensure better emergency access during a time of flooding that could come down 40th Street. But as of right now, potentially, response times could be extended additionally if there were a flood situation. And then there's a comprehensive plan amendment associated with these as well, just some minor future land use changes. The area to be developed as residential would be transferred to urban density residential from green space. Some minor changes also related to the floodplain revision, to the floodplain boundary. In terms of the growth tiers, the PUD area is currently in tier one priority B, so it would be changed to tier one priority A since it would have an approved plan. The areas for residential development are mostly already shown in tier one priority B for the west side. And then this area's in tier two, which matches the floodplain area. Because this would all be part of the CUP and annexed, it would all be transferred to tier one priority A. And then some other minor changes to the growth tier, growth tiers in the area based on these changes. And then revision of the future service limit as well to expand and catch those areas that are now going to be in tier one.
Questions?
That'll take any questions you have.
I guess that's...
The amendment, which, is that to 4.2D to strike? Trying to keep track of all my...
Yeah, there's an amendment to the special permit.
Okay.
Staff report as well as the CUP. And...
Anything else, any other questions? Thank you. Applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Mark Hunzick, are appearing on behalf of Apple's Way LLC, the developer. As Rachel said, this is two applications, really, the PUD on the east side of 27th, the community unit plan on the west. The PUD application is for 192 single-family dwellings and a B2 overlay of about 12 and a half acres. We're not sure what that's going to be, whether it'll be mixed use, or whether it'll be apartments, or whether it'll be all commercial. But that will be determined in the future, and we will have to come back for approval of a site plan for that parcel. The community unit plan application is showing 45 single-family units, eight of which are detached, and the rest townhomes. The conservation easement on the site is rather large. As Rachel pointed out, there is a, an agreement with the NRD which enables us to reshape the existing conservation easement. And I'll show you here on the east side what that means. The existing conservation easement is the dark lines. The dash lines here represent the new contour of the conservation easement around the commercial site. And around the residential, it tracks the backs of these lots. The green here is showing where we are actually adding new flood storage areas. And on the west side, I have another drawing that will show you, that we're actually adding quite a bit of area to the flood storage area on the west side, to the south of our of our single-family and the townhomes on the cul-de-sac. The net result is that we are reducing the flood elevation in this area by about two feet. In addition to that, we are restoring that entire conservation easement area that, as redefined by this change in the boundaries, to native prairie, which will reduce the rate of flow as well as improve the water quality that's flowing into Salt Creek. As Rachel said, we are going to be paving Roca B Road at the developer's expense, and we will be contributing a million dollars toward the completion of improvements on 40th Street, which will raise 40th Street out of the floodplain and provide better access, particularly for emergency vehicles, not only to our property, but to all the property south in that vicinity. There's already another subdivision, which is potentially completely isolated, both from the south and the north, that takes its only access off 40th Street. So the public works department has been setting aside funding for that project for some time. We hope that the million dollars that are being, that's being contributed here will accelerate that to the point of getting it done even more quickly. We would love to have them tell us they're going to have that done by the end of the year, but they won't. So we will, we will hope that it gets done as quickly as possible. With that, I will say, we agree with the changes that were suggested by the planning department to the staff reports, and I will ask, try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Hunzick?
Can you fit any more into this application?
I'm sorry?
Can you fit any more into this application?
Well, we could have. We actually are trying to keep these lots pretty large, so we're way under the density that would be permissible.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of these items? And we're going to discuss all of them together.
I'm Roger Simmons, 2970 South Street. Did that come up by itself?
It's, yep, there it is.
Okay. I'm president of the Simmons Sawtillow Cemetery, which is that little corner right there. That's not listed as being annexed. The applicants didn't contact us. Why, I don't know. We would like to talk to them for a couple of reasons. One, he just stated that they're going to pave Roca B Road. We've contacted the county road department at least eight years ago, and again, four years ago. But back in the 1850s, when our cemetery started, the pioneers at one time, when they saw a cemetery, they didn't belong or didn't know how to do it, they sometimes planted their deceased outside of a cemetery, right outside the gates. Three years ago, we had some sonar done right outside our gates because we had always had the history passed down to us that we had graves outside our gates. It's been determined that we do have four graves outside, right outside our gates. If they pave, they're going to have to remove those. There's a whole bunch of statutes in the state of Nebraska about how to do those. And the county road people said that when, and if that ever got paved, they'd have to get involved, and the, oh, the Indian Bureau of Indian Affairs and all this, all sorts of people have to be involved. So take that under consideration, please. Okay, they're there. We've had it sonarred. Okay. The other thing, since we were not aware until about a week ago about this proposal annexation, we're going to check with our legal services because there is some consideration. We might want to be within the city limits. We have an outhouse, that's illegal, even within the three-mile limit, I suppose. We have a well, which may not be legal anymore. We want water, we want sewer, we want electricity. So we want maybe to be annexed in. And whether we can still do that before the city council meets, I don't know. But we're not opposed to this annexation.
Questions?
I'd like to have made that known, and we're going to pursue this rapidly.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Simmons? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of these items? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of these items? Do we have questions for staff? Okay, we do.
Rachel, could you just address the question of want to be annexed? What do you do?
Sure. So it's definitely something we can consider, annexing of that property. It can't be included as part of this annexation because the legal ad with the legal description was already advertised, but certainly, we'd consider a separate application for annexation.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
Not really rebuttal, just to let you know that we have actually thought about the cemetery. The paving, the paving we are going to be doing will stop at the west edge of the cemetery. We were aware that there were issues with respect to graves outside the property lines of the cemetery, or at least maybe into the road easement right of way. And the gate is down at the east end, so we're going to be well away from that area and not going past the cemetery with the paving at this time. Obviously, at such time as the county or the city, either one has a project that goes by there, it will have to take all that into account as was suggested.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Jerry, do you want to call these separately?
Yes. Okay. Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 17006 to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by revising the boundaries of the future land use plan, residential, green space, and environmental resources designation areas, expanding the future service limit, and changing the future growth tier designation from tier two and tier one priority B to tier one priority A on property generally located southwest and southeast of South 27th and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? I think we'll discuss all these together. I'm going to support this. I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's good use of the land, and they're a good development. So Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Annexation number 17005 to annex approximately 100, or 218.67 acres more or less on property generally located southwest and southeast of South 27th Street and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Second was Harris?
Yeah.
Okay. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes, sorry.
Finnegan?
For a second.
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next item is change of zone number 17012 from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential on property generally located southwest of South 27th Street and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertained a motion.
So moved. Edgerton.
Thank you.
Second.
Harris.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Zero, or six to zero, sorry. Okay. Change of zone 17013 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District for plan unit development of up to 450 dwelling units and up to 50,000 square feet of commercial floor area on property generally located at the southeast corner of South 27th and Roca B Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval as identified in the revised staff report.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second, Weber.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. And special permit number 17017 to allow for the development of a community unit plan with up to 79 single-family dwelling units with a waiver to allow double frontage lots on property generally located at southwest, or generally located southwest of South 27th and Roca B Road. This is final action by the planning commission unless appealed to the clerk within 14 days. Staff recommendation is conditional approval as per the revised staff report.
Entertained a motion.
Move approval. Second, Edgerton.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I think we need a break. We're fine.[615.12]
All right, I will note again that Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on the following two items. Item 4.3A is use permit number 17005 to allow for office and residential uses and related improvements with waivers from setback and frontage requirements on property generally located at 6969 South Street and 2215 South Seventieth Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Item 4.3B is change of zone number 17008 from R1 Residential District to O3 Office Park District on property generally located at 6969 South Street and 2215 South Seventieth Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I see none. George?
Thank you. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So the location where we're at is the southwest corner of South Street and South Seventieth, two existing single-family home properties. And I'll just go over both the change of zone and use permit here just briefly. The request is for O3 zoning designation. This district requires a use permit for development. The O3 district permits single-family, two-family, multifamily housing as well as office uses and some commercial uses such as retail, banks, and personal services. I would note the site is identified in the comprehensive plan for future residential land uses. However, O3 zoning would be appropriate in this location based on several considerations. First, I would note there is a permanent buffer and open space as part of the townhome development to the south that would act as a buffer to any office or commercial uses. Second, to the west, there is large lot residential and church property that are on the south side of South Street that are in a similar position to this site that could future subdivide in redevelopment in the near term. And then finally, the comprehensive plan does support locating medical office and small-scale commercial within walking distance of neighborhoods, especially in existing areas. So the recommendation for the change of zone is approval respective of the use permit The specific request is for a use permit to redevelop two properties at this intersection. There'd be a Phase 1, which is the north property, and there'd be a Phase 2, which is the south property. In Phase 1, there would be 13,500 square feet of commercial space, which would be comprised of three buildings. And in Phase 2, there would either be the same, there'd be three office buildings, or there would be up to 12 residential units. And I would just go back briefly to the southern exhibit. The existing driveway for the residential property on South Street would be removed, and that access point would be located as a temporary driveway to the west. There'd be a new access on South Seventieth with a right turn lane established. The developer would, at his expense, construct that new right turn lane on South Seventieth. And then the driveway, as I mentioned, on South Street would be relocated upon development further to the west. There is a stormwater detention facility that would be located in the southwest corner of Phase 1, and if Phase 2 is commercially developed, then they would properly size it for both development areas. There are waivers requested as part of this use permit. The waivers specifically pertain to setbacks. There are zero-foot setbacks for the proposed commercial lots on both properties, and also a zero-foot setback between the mutual property lines. And finally, there's also a waiver to allow the three lots to adjoin the outlawed area and not directly front on right-of-way. So this approval is conditional. The recommendation is conditional approval. There are 10 site-related conditions. One of them pertains to that driveway relocation, such that the developer would have to relinquish that upon further development to the west. I do know that traffic was a concern that was raised by the neighborhood, and there are representatives here from Public Works that could speak further, but Public Works did review this plan, and they are okay with it as presented.
Thank you. Any questions, Sir George? Thank you. Applicant?
Good afternoon. Kent Seacrest, representing Dr. Brad Alderman, who is a dentist in southwest Lincoln that would like to move his dentist facility here at this corner. We have also worked with our neighbor to the south, Charles and Mary Sherman, who Charles is here. We appreciate that cooperation. They're Phase 2, we're Phase 1. We have talked about doing this together. What this is really about is the comprehensive plan once more infill. And if you look at our two properties, along with maybe two properties to our west, we're not fully utilizing the landmass. And so planning pointed that out and feels we can do a better job. And when we do that better job, then we don't have to grow as fast at the edge and build infrastructure at the edge, and we can create more walkability, which was mentioned. So that's what is the purpose of our efforts. And we have worked with the Shermans and outlined that we're going to do our two properties together. Association, common design, low-impact design, these are very small buildings, common access, common parking, common lighting, and we will have a maintenance association. So we will be probably the quietest parties in the neighborhood because from 8:00 to 5:00 we'll have, be there, but probably after 5:00 PM we're not, and on weekends we're not, but we'll probably be one of the best at mowing and picking up the leaves for the neighborhood along the way. We did have a nice neighborhood meeting last Monday night. Twenty of our neighbors came, and they voiced, you know, a couple of them are here. I felt the land use wasn't the issue. The issue was, are we creating traffic issues? And that neighborhood has had South Seventieth Street under construction for two years, and so it's really, they've had traffic issues. And so I think the concern is, does our low-impact project add to their dilemmas along the way? And again, Public Works is here to, I think, testify that they don't think so, but the neighbors can voice their own position as they see fit along the way. We are building a turn, right turn lane to not reduce the capacity of the South Seventieth Street network, and we address their stormwater issues as well. But again, they're concerned because there's a portion of the drainage we drain into Holmes Lake, and there's a portion right here that has filled in. It's a wetland now. It used to be a defined channel. And when they have big rains, the neighbors are concerned the water might be backing up into them, and we share that concern. So we've made inquiries with Parks and Rec and Watershed Management, and their first reaction was, that's not an issue, but we want to keep double-checking the elevation just in case silt has raised the area and caused water to back up under the good neighbor policy. That's what good neighbors worry about. So we also have talked to them about keeping the buffer of trees between our phases and their townhome development because that's an important aspect to them. So we want to thank Steve and Henrikson and George for their time. Tim Gergen is here, too, if we have any of those tough civil design watershed traffic-type questions as well. With that, are there any questions?
Questions?
On those, if you go the residential route in Phase 2, are those?
Townhomes.
So even though you could have up to, I think it was what, 12?
Right.
You're only planning on eight right now?
Yeah, we showed eight duplexes. If we went to triplexes, the units would be smaller. It'd be a pretty similar footprint, but it'd be smaller, and you could do up to 12. So we're trying to get permit to do that if appropriate, but again, the Shermers, that's their land. They enjoy their house, and they plan to stay there for a long time, so they'll have to figure that riddle out at the time they decide to sell.
Any other questions? Maya?
The buffered trees that you mentioned, is that in the conditions? I see 2.7 show street trees. Is that what you were referring to?
It's not in the conditions. Let me just get a map to show you. We just can't develop near them. That's the simplest answer I could give you because of the... Here's Phase 1. Phase 2 is up on this northern part. There's the waterway, there's the pond, and this is the lowest of the low. And there's no way to get to the site, so the trees are right on here. So our development is, I don't know, a nine iron shot away from their trees. So, you know, right now, we can say we're preserving trees, but then we'd have to say disease and lightning strikes, but that's our pledge to the neighbors is to keep the trees that are viable.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your overtime today. I know you get paid very well. Just a quick story, the neighbors sent me an email today and said, when do you think this hearing will go down? And I said, it's kind of hard, but I said, be here by 1:30. And so I apologize to the neighbors for being four hours late.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? These two items? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of these items? Please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Richard Nelson. I live at 6924 Old Post Place. I'm a member of the Chaucer Park Homes Association, and I am appearing today on behalf of the Association. Timely coincidence, we had our annual meeting on Friday night, and at that time, we adopted a resolution not to oppose this application, but to take advantage of the opportunity to ask questions. And we did that in the form of concerns. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to pass out copies of the resolution to the Commission members so I don't have to read the whole thing. I'll just summarize it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
As Mr. Seacrest has indicated, we have met together, another one of the owners and I met with him 10 days or two weeks ago to discuss some of our concerns, and as he indicated, they held a neighborhood meeting on Monday night. A number of our members attended, as well as representatives of several other homeowners' association. So we appreciate the cooperation of the developer in dealing with these issues. The first thing I would like to talk about is our concern over stormwater flooding. And if I may, I'd like to use your overhead projector for just a moment.
It's coming right up. There it is.
The Chaucer Park Homeowners Association is located in this area here. This is our northern border, touching the southern border of the application today. I would like to call your attention to a couple of things. First of all, just so you know, I live at 6924, which is located here. I want to also point out 6942, which is on the other side of our four-town home complex there. Also, I would like to draw your attention to this circular walkway, which people use on a regular basis. And I want to point out to you, it's very small and very hard to see, but this little dot right here is a lovely little colored tree that will become important in just a couple of minutes. So that's why I wanted to point this out to you. This is Wellington Green over in this area. Most of Wellington Green drains down into this area under Seventieth Street and on to what we refer to as the Sherman property. Mr. Sherman is here today. We have been neighbors for many, many years. There is a flowage easement that comes across the Sherman property and down into our area. This is noted by the Planning Department on their report. That flowage easement, well, the actual drain itself, you can see outlined, and our property ends right here, and you can see what appears to be a small pond. This area over here, as we understand, and it gets a little complex, I believe is under the jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers. They have leased it to the City of Lincoln, and we have tried for some time to figure out who was responsible for taking care of it. Mr. Seacrest helped us break through that to get the answer, and the answer is Parks and Recreation, as I understand it. Now, moving from that and with that as a frame of reference.
Turn it over. You need to turn it over.
I want to take you to May 26th of 2016. As you may recall, last May, a year ago, we had several very heavy rains. The heaviest was on May 26th. From the property at 6942, in other words, the east side of the fourplex in which I live, these particular photographs were taken. This is what the stormwater was doing at that time, and if you look over here at the very edge, it's that little tree I pointed out to you. Most of the walkway is underwater. That little tree, I didn't have a long tape measure, but it's 40 paces from the corner of my house. So, yeah, 80, 90 feet away. And this was not standing water. This was rushing water that was coming through as a result of a very heavy rain. The lower part is looking over toward the Sherman property. Again, you can see the bottom of our little walkway, and the street that you're looking over there is, over there is Seventieth Street. Not only is a good part of our property underwater, but also parts of the Sherman property are underwater at that particular point. So what we have seen over the years, and this is not the only occasion, but on a number of occasions of heavy rain, is that water coming up quite close to our residences right now.
Sir, if you could wrap up your testimony. Could you wrap up your testimony fairly soon?
I will try to. I have sat here for four hours.
Yes, sir.
And I want to point out, I mean, we are really concerned. I want to point out a couple of other things. Let me start with this. Now, let me turn that. Our property ends about right here. That's public property over there. The water does not drain. This was taken this year, a good 12 hours after a 1 1/2-inch rain. Not a heavy rain, just a 1 1/2-inch rain. We have water backing up because it's not flowing out. Now, we understand that there is a flowage easement across our property, and we understand that the application would seem to fit within the comprehensive plan, but one of the conditions listed by the department was 2.10. Submit grading plan corrections and stormwater information to the satisfaction of the Public Works and Utilities Watershed Management Division. Stormwater does not work in a vacuum. It doesn't flow in a vacuum. Mr. Seacrest was kind enough to contact the City of Lincoln and ask them to take a look at the problems with flowage out of this area. The response was, no, we haven't done any maintenance there for years, but we're satisfied with the flow of water. Unless this issue is addressed before everybody starts building and doing their plans, we feel our homes are threatened. We would suggest and tell this issue can be properly addressed and that the public, the Parks and Recreation Department can appropriately respond and take responsibility for their failure to take care of these properties, that the decision on this property be delayed. We do have several other items that we mentioned in our resolution. I will not spend time going into them in too great detail, other than to point out that, as I say under Point 1B, the stormwater detention facility proposed on the Sherman property in Phase 2 is very close to the high-water flooding that we are experiencing at the current time. The sighting of that and the construction of that is going to have to be taken care of very carefully, or it's just going to make everything worse. We do mention here visual and noise screening goes without saying. We would love the property to stay the way it is. Right now, I said Mr. Sherman was a good neighbor. He's such a good neighbor that he is host to a family of fox that live on his property, and they come over to our property to entertain the grandchildren. We have wild turkeys. We have all kinds of wildlife living in this area. That's going to be disturbed. And then finally, the traffic issue. The Public Works Department doesn't seem to think it's a problem. And I'm not talking about now, when we're down to one lane in each direction. I'm talking about when the streets are open. We only have one way to access or to leave our property, and that is on Seventieth Street. And it's extremely difficult to get out onto Seventieth Street, certainly to turn north. And oftentimes, people will just turn south, and that may mean going all the way around to 84th Street or all the way down to 56th Street to get north. And we would like to have the traffic issues taken more seriously and addressed than they have been. I thank you for your time, and I'm sorry I took more than, more time than you wanted, Mr. Chairman, but I did think it was very important.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition of these items? Do you have questions for staff? Anything else you'd like to add, Kent? Do you want to address the discussion items that...
Sure. I'm going to ask Tim Gergen to talk about the stormwater.
Sure. The development in Phase 1 will be provided as stormwater detention cell. The comments from Watershed were fairly minor, just some slopes we had to adjust on the detention cell. So we'll be detaining the city-required stormwater amount from Phase 1. In the neighborhood meeting, I had stipulated that in Phase 2, we can't really depict what that stormwater detention cell size is because we don't know whether it's going to be office or residential, and that greatly affects the stormwater calculations on that end. So when that Phase 2 comes in, we'll come in and appropriately size that stormwater detention cell for Phase 2 as well.
Good neighbors help other good neighbors, and so we're not giving up. We know what the City Parks Department believes, that there's not an issue. We're going to verify that, and if we have to go out and get a surveyor to mark what the elevation is on the governmental land, has silt raised it or not? And we'll do that comparison and help the neighbors figure that out because if they get flooded, we could get flooded, and we just obviously have that same common interest. So we will work that out with Watershed and Parks. We won't take their first answer that there's not an issue. We will keep investigating that. Anything else we can address?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I forgot to say Planning Department's in support of this.
We have two items.
Yep. Okay, ready to call the first item?
Sure.
Okay. Use permit number 17005 to allow for office and residential uses and related improvements with waivers from setback and frontage requirements on property generally located at 6969 South Street and 2215 South Seventieth Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertained motion.
Move approval for?
Second. Finnegan.
Discussion?
If I would just say, anytime you go from R1, you need to think about it extra hard because it's the highest protection in terms of what you, of being a neighbor in that area. But I think that there are some kind of special qualities of the site, like the easement that provides a buffer that will definitely help. And also, there are several things about this application that really conform with the comprehensive plan, like walkability and infill, and so I think all in all, it's a good project, and I will support it.
Anyone else? I'm going to support the motion as well. I think that really it comes down to the neighbors and their issues with the water issues, and I think those are fixable, and I take Mr. Seacrest at his word that he's going to look into it and make sure that it gets done, so... Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, change of zone number 17008 from R1 Residential District to O3 Office Park District on property generally located at 6969 South Street and 2215 South Seventieth Street. Staff recommendation is conditional approval.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second, Core.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear, or I'm sorry, Shear has a conflict. Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay. Moving on to item 4.4 is street and alley vacation number 17006 to vacate a portion of 17th Street right-of-way, generally located at 17th Street between Vine Street and approximately 300 feet, feet north of R Street. Staff recommendation is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this agenda item?
I see none. George?
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So we're just on the south side of Vine Street, between Vine and R, and the proposed vacation area includes all of North 17th Street except for roughly 300 feet in proximity to R Street. And the intent is for the university to convert this into a private roadway. One of the conditions of approval is that they submit a final plat prior to the transfer of title, and that would assure the conveyance to a private roadway. There are some roadway improvements planned in relation to this area, including 16th Street, which Public Works can detail further, but basically speaking, North 17th Street would be closed as a public street between R and Vine Street, and then there would be a conversion of 16th Street from one-way to two-way traffic. So once North 7th Street is vacated, excuse me, North 17th Street, and during the demolition of the residence halls, Cathar Hall and Pound Hall, construction activity will be prohibited. And then once that demolition is complete, the university will look at measures to block through traffic through that area. And then as far as the timeframe, implementation of the 16th Street improvements are scheduled to commence or move forward mid-July and be completed by the start of the fall semester. So there are some utility easements that are requested as conditions of approval, including private utilities as well as water and sewer lines. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for George?
George, can you tell me on 16th, is it going to be like a two-plus-one or not a two-plus-one? Is it going to have a middle turn lane? How's that going to work there?
I think I'll defer that to Public Works. There's a lot involved there.
Yeah.
Randy Hoskins, Assistant City Engineer. What we've got planned for 16th Street is it will be one lane in each direction. Outside of that will be bike lanes, and then outside of that will be parallel parking.
So bike lanes on both sides?
Both sides of the street, yes, that is correct.
And then I noticed you were going to put a bike lane on Vine, both streets or both sides or just one side?
Both sides, basically from Antelope Valley to 16th Street.
And this may have been in the information we had, but the improvements on 16th Street then happened before the vacation?
That's still up in the air a little bit. That's still up in the air a little bit. The intent would probably be that the vacation will happen first, but the way we're looking at this, it shouldn't matter much.
Okay.
We're comfortable even if the vacation does not go forward. We could go ahead and do this. Again, kind of the reason behind this is when the Antelope Valley project was completed, the idea was we're trying to get traffic out of the campus, out onto Antelope Valley, and go around it. Well, we've done a good job of that, but we think that this project will do an even better job. There's still more traffic going through the campus than what was originally expected to be there after Antelope Valley was completed. So, we think this will just take it that next step.
Thank you.
I'm going to save this now rather than the comments later. I still take Sixteenth and Seventeenth because the lights are timed better. So, if you want me to take Antelope Valley, you've got to get those timed better, because I sit there and I'm not very patient.
I struggle with the same thing. And to let you know, we do have a project going on right now that is, that is in the process of re-timing those lights. One of the other good things that will come about if this happens is that volumes on Vine Street will be reduced, volumes on X Street will be reduced, and so hopefully, we'll be able to cut down the amount of time that we need for those two signals, which are the two that always catch me when I'm going through there, so.
I don't care about those two.
You're for the south.
So, you will kind of force traffic to the big X through P Street?
Yes, yes.
I think a lot of people kind of use Seventeenth to...
I do in one, yeah.
Yeah.
I do.
So, will Sixteenth be two-way from R Street or...
It's actually going to be two-way from Q Street, just the way, way things worked out. And Seventeenth Street then will also go two-way from that same...
Gotcha. And then Seventeenth Street will dead-end there essentially a little bit north just to support the parking lots up there?
Right. There's, I think, fraternities that have access off of sort of an alley there.
Okay.
And so, we need to get, get traffic up to them.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Damm. I'm the Director of Campus Planning and Space Management at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. My office address is 335 Canfield Administration Building. And I think that George and Randy did a really good job of summarizing what the project is. This has been really in the university's plans since 1998. In conjunction with the Antelope Valley project, there were the three partners, the university, the city, and the NRD. One of the purposes of Antelope Valley was to get the traffic out of the heart of campus and to calm it. The Cathar Pound Residential Halls are in the process of coming down. Our new dining center is opening up. We have 1,500 students living in the suites. There's another five or 600 students who live in the 50-50 project. The new health center and nursing college is under construction in this area here. So, we have a lot of students who are traversing through this part of campus. So, it's really important to us to slow down the traffic in that area and try and reduce it as much as possible. A couple of years ago, we contracted as a partner with Public Works to take a look at the traffic in this area and come up with solutions and to verify what we are showing in our master plan, which is a complete-street project on Sixteenth Street. The cross-section, really, it looks a lot like Eleventh Street, just a couple blocks over, if you want something for reference. Vine Street will become more complete-street oriented. We have a tremendous increase in the number of bicyclists coming to campus, particularly from the east along Vine Street, so we think this will enhance their safety. The area right in front of the dining center will become a pedestrian mall, similar to the rest of the malls on campus that were streets at one point in time. And then, eventually, we'll have a turnaround in front of the courtyards to provide for drop-offs for the students who are living in those apartments. With that quick summary, I know it's been a long day, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of these items? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Any other questions for staff? Anything else? Last minute, anything else you'd like to say? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval for second Edgerton.
Discussion?
I think this is a great project. I think that, you know, in making, improving safety for the university students and for that area is important as we're adding to that particular area of campus and bringing students from east side to the west side. It makes a lot of sense. It's doable, and it'll be exciting to see that area of campus develop, continue to develop.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's, it has been a long time coming, and I think we've known it was coming. I mourn the loss of streets, though, but I'll adjust. It's the right thing to do.
Anyone else? Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for street and alley vacation number 17006. Staff recommendation is in conformance with comprehensive plan. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5.1 is special permit number 17012 to allow for installation of a 100-kilowatt solar energy conversion system with a waiver to reduce the yard along Interstate 80 from 25 feet to 5 feet on property generally located at West Lake Shore Drive. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the clerk within 14 days, and staff recommendation is for conditional approval per the revised staff report. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I see none. Andrew?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. So, this is a continued hearing from May 24th, so I'll just be brief because we did discuss this, but there are a few new items. One, as Jerry had mentioned, we, we had advertised for a new waiver on the west side. So, it's, the required setback here would be reduced to 5 feet instead of 25 feet. The setback along West Lake Shore Drive would remain a minimum of 25 feet, but I think they're going to actually far exceed that. We have received several comments about, concerns about the wetlands from neighboring residents, so we double-checked with, with all the agencies. The NRDs looked at this. They, they don't see any particular issue. I talked to the Coordinator of the Saline Wetlands Conservation Partnership. He did not have any concerns with this. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service felt that this is not really suitable Salt Creek Tiger Beetle habitat, so they didn't have any concerns on that front. Nebraska Game and Parks did want to look at the site, so that's what, I think you received a memo from this morning adding another condition to the staff report. So, we added another condition just to say that when the specific site plan is being put together as a condition of approval, we need to make sure there aren't any threatened endangered plants or animal, or animal species located in the specific location where the solar panels are going to go. So, so speaking with Nebraska Game and Parks, their one potential concern or something to be aware of was salt wart. This is private property. They haven't surveyed it. They don't, they don't know if there's salt wart out there or not. It's possible. From what I understand, salt wart somewhat grows in patches, so you could have some of it here and then 200 feet without any, any salt wart. They just want to make sure that the panels aren't being put right on top of some salt warts. So, so an additional condition is to make sure that that's been addressed. Spoken with the applicants, they are okay with that condition. Basically, what this means is Nebraska Game and Parks will go out to the site specifically where the panels are going to be located and just confirm that there's no threat nor endangered species where these panels are going to be. And Nebraska Game and Parks is, is fine with this, with this condition. So, so I think that addresses any of the wetland concerns of the neighbors. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions?
What was the reasoning behind the waiver for the, reducing the setback?
The panels are a certain size. It does give them some leniency to push it 15 feet further from the houses.
Okay, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
20 feet, I guess.
Anything else?
Just a question about the conditions of the homeowner's association. Did you, did you include all of those conditions in your conditions, or is there, that's left out of their demands?
I can't, yeah, I can't remember if we included all of them, but those would, I mean, the homeowner's association is the, the owner of that land, so if they're not meeting the conditions, the homeowner's association could just kick them out of, kick them off the land, basically.
Even if, even if it's not in our conditions, it will still be, the LLC will still have to adhere to those conditions. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the homeowner's association still owns the land, so if they're unhappy with the way the LLC is operating, they could ask the LLC to leave the land, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Advocate?
Good afternoon. Terry Whitler, 1940 Surfside Drive. I'm one of the managers of the Beach Solar LLC. We did ask to have the setback changed so that we could put our panels closer to the interstate, the idea being that they'd be further from the homes, and we can more, make a more compact set of arrays rather than stretching them out more, further north and south. So, that, that's the purpose of that, that change. I did want to address concerns about visibility and concerns about residents. This is a shot of a typical tree cover in an area where we would like to locate our panels, so this would be looking from a homeowner's front yard to the west. This is looking west immediately adjacent to where I just showed you, and this would be slightly further to the north. So, these are, these are areas that are going to be well-screened by the tree line that's already in place. The panels themselves will be on a level about six feet lower than the street level where these trees are located.
Just coming about, they'll be six feet lower than the street level that you showed. They don't have that much height. That's the total height of...
No, I don't, no, I didn't mean to say that. The, the ground on which the panels will be located is six feet lower than the ground where you saw those trees.
What is the height of the panels?
I believe they will be 14 feet by the, a maximum of 14 feet. The permit, I think, says a maximum, or the, I'm sorry, city code says a maximum of 20 feet, but we don't anticipate going that, that tall. We will install them using these ground screws. There will be minimal disruption to the wetlands area. I did want to mention there are, I believe, 52 homeowners along West Lake Shore, so we've not heard any objection from the vast majority of those folks. Finally, I wanted to give, if I may, the clerk, a copy of a revenue ruling from the Department of Revenue, Directive 16-1, that addresses concerns that were raised a month ago. There are no property tax implications for this project.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, Beach Solar LLC is its own entity. Is it leasing property from the homeowners' association or how?
We, we are, as a member, all the members of the homeowners' association, by the bylaws of the association, have an easement that gives them the right to use the common areas of the association. So, we are not leasing the property per se. We are exercising our rights under the bylaws to, to that easement.
So, is everybody that's a part of the homeowners' association part of the Beach Solar LLC, then?
No, because we have 230 or so members in the association. We're not anticipating that everyone wants to participate. We're a non, the association is a nonprofit entity. What makes this work are tax credits. The association can't take any advantage of those tax credits. So, we are making the opportunity available to all the members. Some folks have felt that we're trying to exclude them by saying 20. That was an optimistic, I was hoping I could get 20 people that would invest, because we're going to need to raise about $300,000 to do this project.
But it'll be offered to everyone that's in the homeowners' association?
It'll be, it'll be offered to everyone, and if I get out of here before 7 o'clock, I'm going to a meeting with the association to talk to potential investors.
Great.
One question. When you said it was six feet below the road here?
Yes.
So, it sticks up possibly eight feet over. There seemed to be some confusion, the size of the panel, between five feet or four feet and 14 feet.
The individual panels, I think, are approximately five feet tall.
Okay.
I believe we will stack at least two of them, and then they will be on some kind of a frame that gets them up off the ground, let's say, four feet. So, if you have four feet, five feet, and five, that gets you to 14.
Gotcha.
So, if you end up with more than 20 investors, you would modify that to accept more investors if they...
I think so. If, if we get to the point where we have 60 or 80 people wanting to invest, then the administrative burden might make it not worth doing, but right now, I have three people that want to invest, so I'm not as worried about that as some other people are.
Anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Please come forward.
This is the most patient human being. She and her husband, they were in here before I was today, so.
We just were unsure of parking, and this is really important to a lot of people at Capital Beach. I don't know how many letters of opposition you got. I had several of my neighbors tell me they sent one through the email.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize. I got really, your compliment gave me a boost there. My name is Darlene Pullman. My new home is at 232 West Lake Shore Drive. As I understand it, the panels are not going to be right in front of my house. I am a member of the Capital Beach Community Association, and I guess I have a part that I could play with the LLC. But I do really feel strong about the wetlands. It may have been answered to you about the wetlands from the different organizations, but this is not going to be a zero impact on this land. I have watched little ducks go, come from that area. This is going to have an impact at least for one year, two years, three years. There will be grading. I know that the land, the fill, let me see, I want to get the right terminology, that the ground screws will not result in enough discharge of fill material to require a special permit, but there will be impact from the fill land. I have seen the type of solar that is going in. I have experienced it. I have seen the grading work that goes with it. There is impact to, there will be impact to this wetland. And I guess one thing that I, I do wonder, does the city of Lincoln really want to approve solar? I am pro-solar. I may not sound it. Do we really want to approve solar on wetland? There has been so... My second concern is that I think it would be not sound planning practice, is that the city would be setting a precedent of approving private individuals who form an LLC to receive income or incentive from private, tax-exempt wetland. Approval of this special permit has a latent potential of triggering future problems for the city, as well as the residents of Capital Beach. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that you read several of the opposition emails that were sent in. Some of the people could not stay. I, I seriously considered not staying, but it was a very important thing. I ask you to consider the two concerns that I have presented before making the final decision. One of the two little quotes that I truly believe in, "There is no such thing as an impact-free energy source, not even solar. Wetlands are irreplaceable and rare." Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Any questions? Any questions for Ms. Pullman? Thank you.
Well, my voice and brain didn't quite hang together. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that are wishing to testify in opposition of this item? Do we have questions for staff? Anything else? Applicant?
Yes, I do have a question for staff. This issue about income and tax-exempt land, was that discussed with city attorney, with, with any about, about any concerns about those issues?
Yeah, the bit, the, this was more tied to the text amendment discussion we had last time.
Right.
But yes, the idea of allowing an LLC for solar panels on a outlot was discussed with the attorney's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Applicant?
My understanding of the ground screws that we are using is that they will simply be twisted into the ground. There will be no grading. I can't say that they don't push up a little bit of dirt as you push them down, but we're not going out there with equipment and grading, moving earth, or removing grasses, or anything like that. That's all I have.
Go ahead.
Okay. I can't remember. You sell the solar power back to LES, is that right?
Yes.
And they use it for the entire community?
Yes.
Do you know, is your homeowner's, um, association, is it tax-exempt?
Yeah, it's a nonprofit, and so therefore...
Five oh C three?
Not a C three, but a...
Okay.
A C six or something close to that.
So have you guys looked into the implications of, is this, I'm assuming that it's not going to jeopardize that status since you're an LLC and not directly the, the HOA?
It will not have any impact on the HOA.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion.
Move approval, Core. Second, Edgerton.
Discussion? I'm going to support the motion. I appreciate, Ms. Pullman, your thoughts and, and consideration, and I know that they've been heard loud and clear by the applicant, as well as, as others here, and hopefully you'll be watching over this as it gets built and keep, keep a good eye on it. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for conditional approval per the revised staff report for special permit number 17012. Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
If this time anyone wished to speak on an item not on the agenda, may do so. Or a German.